And we're ready. All right, you ready to start? Hey, everybody, thank you for joining us. Let's call it a order. It is May 25th at 7:05. Kay, could you do roll call, please?
Cindy Suplesio? She's online. Kay Gianetti?
Here.
Jess Robson? Jay Engstrom?
Here.
Dablin? Is absent. Nicholas DeFrank?
Present.
Jared Moore?
Here.
Kim McGee?
Here.
Nick Michion?
Here.
All right, wow, we got a lot of people here tonight. When was the last time we had this many people at a PNZ meeting?
Yeah, I'm a little jealous.
Has there been a last one? I don't know. Cindy, thank you for joining us. As I understand it, you're just kind of sitting in and just kind of watching and going through. It sounds like you're still going through training and everything like that with Jared, so. But thank you for joining us, and we're excited to have you on the team. So yeah, the first item is the approval of the minutes from May 11th. Do commissioners have any questions or comments regarding the minutes?
No questions. Just thank you to Kay for trying to make sense of all the conversations that we had.
Right? It made it sound like we didn't go off on a bunch of tangents when we really did, so.
We'd never do that.
Never do that. Would anybody?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve minutes from last meeting. What's the date? May 11th. Motion to approve.
All right, we had Nick made the motion and Jess seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is public comment for persons not on the agenda. So if anyone in the public has something that they'd like to present to the commissioners, if you could please step up to the podium or raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. That being said, if you're here for the Little Blue application, we'll be talking about that later, so you guys can step up then as opposed to now. So do we have anybody that on the call that would be interested?
The attendee is.
Okay, awesome. Well, with that, we can move on to the next item, which then is Little Blue preschool application for 55 North 7th Street. This is regarding administrative site plan review, subdivision exemption, special use permit, and rezoning. Before we dive into this one, I just wanted to check and see if anybody on the commission has a conflict of interest that they would like to bring to our attention.
Not a conflict of interest, but just to let everybody know and let everybody be aware that I am a partner in the property 689 across the street from the project. So no affiliation with Little Blue, but yeah, own property on the street.
So you don't feel like this impacts your ability to make an unbiased decision?
I don't.
All right.
Yeah.
Do the rest of the commissioners feel all right with Kay joining on this? Okay. Well, cool. Then, given that, we can move along to the introduction on the project. And Kelly, this one's yours, right? Do you want to kick us off?
Yes, happy to. Hello, commissioners, members of the public. I'm Kelly Ander, staff planner for the Little Blue preschool expansion project. I'm going to take just a few minutes to highlight some aspects of the proposed project and the associated applications. And then the applicant is here to take you through the details of their proposal. Little Blue preschool has been in their current location at 55 North 7th Street for a little over two years now. They are proposing to double in size, adding approximately 2,500 square feet in two buildings and increasing capacity from 36 to 70 children. The school is asking to merge the two lots that make up the site, one of which is Zoned CT Commercial Transitional, and one of which is Zoned RMD Residential Medium Density, into one lot that would be Zoned HCC or Historic Commercial Core. The project as proposed requires four approvals. Administrative Site Plan Review, which the Planning Director has bundled with the other applications. So that has been referred up to you, the PNZ, and subsequently to the Board of Trustees. A subdivision exemption for the merger of the two lots, also a PNZ decision. A special use permit for the childcare, which is also a planning and zoning decision. And a rezoning, which you, the Planning and Zoning Commission, will make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees. It is a well-known fact that our community, both Carbondale specifically, as well as the broader Roaring Fork Valley, desperately needs more childcare. Blue Lake is an established, well-respected childcare provider, and the current location at 55 North 7th Street is a good one in terms of walkability to Sopra's Park, local transit, other factors. The question for you commissioners is whether or not the project as proposed complies with the comprehensive plan and meets the criteria, special use, site plan review, subdivision exemption, and rezoning. Let's talk about parking. The southern half of the block where the school is located, north of Main Street, between 7th and 8th Streets, is Zoned Commercial Transitional, as is the block to the south of the project. Commercial Transitional zoning requires off-street parking for childcare at one space per employee. The proposed HCC zoning does not require off-street parking for childcare or any other commercial use except lodging. The school currently has seven off-street parking spaces and would keep two of them. The expanded facility would have 11 employees and would therefore require 11 off-street parking spaces if the lots are merged into one lot, Zoned CT, and not HCC. The off-street parking requirement would limit the size of their proposed addition, not prevent it, but limit it, and is part of the rationale for the applicant's request to rezone to HCC. Regarding zoning. Unlike other requests for rezoning, the Commercial Transitional District is an appropriate zoning for the block in question. It may not be the only appropriate zoning, but it is not being phased out like some other districts and exists in several other blocks around town. The CT district functions well as a transition between the higher-intensity downtown commercial core and the surrounding residential areas. The project proposes a spot zoning, which is typically discouraged because it would be the only lot Zoned HCC in the subject block. It therefore raises the question, are the blocks north and south of Main Street, between 7th and 8th Streets, most appropriately zoned as CT? Or should they transition over time to HCC? The staff memo in your packets contains information to help you consider this question, including the purposes of the two zoning districts as stated in the Unified Development Code and how the HCC zoning district compares to the comprehensive plans downtown future land use designation. The applicant will talk to you about their proposed improvements to the public right-of-way. So I want to remind this commission that the UDC requires commercial development to construct a raised curb and sidewalk and to provide street trees and related irrigation for all commercial construction projects. The school is also proposing to reorient the four parallel public parking spaces in front of the property to be head-in parking, allowing space for up to nine cars. There are other details of the project that I will let the applicant cover in the presentation to you. So I will just cover a couple other points, aspects of information that are in your packets. Agency referral comments. We always refer projects like this to relevant agencies and other departments. So in your packet, you can see that the Police Department and the Department of Public Works express their concerns about the project. In his comment letter, the Public Works Director states that he does not support a spot rezoning to eliminate onsite parking requirements. The police chief cites concerns about parking and traffic from the expanded facility exceeding the capacity of the public right-of-way. The Fire Department has no concerns, and the Town Arborist provided detailed recommendations related to the site and landscape plans included in the application. As far as public comment, staff has received over 50 public comment letters, most of which were included in your packets distributed a few days ago. Another seven letters were sent out yesterday to you commissioners and the applicant via email, and they are available today to the public upon request. The majority of the public comment letters express support for the project based on the need for more childcare. Staff also received letters from four adjacent and nearby property owners expressing concerns about the scale of the proposed expansion and the traffic and parking impacts associated with the proposed rezoning. Staff recommendation. As stated in the staff memo, planning staff are looking to you commissioners for guidance. If the lots are merged into one lot, Zoned CT, the school could still expand, but would need to fulfill the parking requirement in some way, which could include a request for alternative compliance. Page 12 of the staff memo lists several strategies that could mitigate traffic and parking impacts. In conclusion, staff are asking the commissioners to consider which zoning is most appropriate for the property, and if a rezoning were to be approved, whether or not the impacts to adjacent properties and the public right-of-way are able to be mitigated. Lastly, I will recap the actions before you today. This commission will need to approve or disapprove the subdivision exemption for the lot merger and the special use permit for childcare, as well as make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees on the site plan review and the rezoning application. The review criteria for all four of the applications can be found in the staff memo, pages 8 through 14. Just to conclude, staff recommends that this commission continue the public hearing after hearing testimony and having discussion tonight to the next Planning and Zoning Commission hearing on June 8th to allow staff to prepare recommended motions and findings based on your feedback tonight. Thank you, and we are available for questions.
All right, thank you, Kelly. Questions for staff?
Does the applicant meet the review criteria for all four items that were deliberating tonight?
That is up to this commission to decide. Staff presented various pieces of information in the packet. The criteria and the ability of the project to meet those criteria is up for discussion.
All of them, okay.
It absolutely, the project meets some of them very clearly, but not all of them, not clearly. So it's about whether or not the proposed impacts are able to be mitigated sufficiently to fulfill those findings.
I had a question regarding the like initial application or initial discussions with the Little Blue team is, was it recommended to them to do, to keep it as CT, or was it, were there any recommendations as to what to do with zoning, or was it left open-ended for them?
I'll let Jared chime in absolutely as needed, because he had some interactions with the applicant before I started working here.
Sure.
But we, planning staff, have all along discussed various options with Little Blue, and they came through for their initial approvals a little over two years ago. So other town staff was very familiar with the property, and Little Blue was familiar with the zoning and their ideas about future expansion, so. In staff's mind, Little Blue was aware of staff's concerns about HCC and the pros and cons of pursuing that application.
Sure. Yeah, I would just say to add to that, a lot of the concerns and conversations that we had with the applicant were around the options that existed for them, and really the two zone districts that were discussing, the HCC and the CT, and kind of the differences between them. And I think as Kelly presented in her staff report, there's a lot of similarities between those two zone districts. There are some differences. And, you know, she really highlighted some of the major differences, and that's related to the requirement for onsite parking and how that impacts the public right-of-way. And so we had a lot of conversations with the applicant about that. We worked with the applicant on the variety of site plan options that they presented to us and ultimately to the Planning Commission to look at different configurations with the parking along the street, changing from parallel to head-in parking. And so, you know, we did have a lot of open dialogue with them about what we felt some of our concerns were, and we're able to work through some of them, and ultimately, some of them, we felt were warranted to be weighed in by this body to determine kind of that next course or that next step in the recommendation and review process.
Sure.
Did staff, so I think a lot of what in reading this and hearing, Kelly, thank you for that great intro, we're talking about like the static nature of the site plan. Like X-mouse parking spaces located here, not here, building here, not here, et cetera. A component that I didn't really find a whole lot of info, maybe I've missed it, is more of the transitional qualities of drop-off, pickup, circulation planning in a safe way. Was that at all broached with the applicant or discussed?
Absolutely, and the applicant will provide information about that in their presentation. There are details that have been discussed and were part of the application from the beginning about the different age groups of children, the different times of day that they would attend school and be onsite. The nature of the traffic patterns, the nature, timing of drop-off and pickup, all of those factors are described in the application and were discussed between the applicant and staff. The alley is a bit of a unique condition, so, you know, there's pros and cons to the parking that exists on the alley. And there are obviously varying site conditions along 7th Street, depending on which part of that block you are looking at.
Right.
Parking is currently handled differently in front of each of the different properties in that block of 7th Street. So those were all factors that have been considered.
And so there are comments or some comments in the applicant's application, but as far as the town has not provided any feedback in your kind of overview on on that process or what that would look like, or their town's position on that? Sorry to put you in so much of a spot there.
Well, I guess you're asking if the town has feelings positively or negatively about circulation and traffic and parking?
Yeah, I guess so. I guess I'm trying to peel back the curtain a little bit to see how those conversations went. Do you feel that, you know, just a, I guess a little bit of a preview as to the comfort you were able to derive from those conversations? Or understanding how it would work?
I think we understand the nature of the timing of the drop-off and pickup that would be happening. Little Blue, as part of any special use application, a traffic study is required, and Little Blue provided those numbers. And there are some details there about families that have two children, not just one, et cetera. So there is a complexity to understanding the nature of the traffic and parking impacts. And again, the applicant can speak to that in detail. You heard through our referrals, concerns from Public Works and police. 7th Street is, it has certain conditions today that are likely to change, not just with this project, but with others. So town staff is appropriately thinking to the future about future parking conditions and traffic conditions. The, there are, I will say, there are no concerns about converting existing parallel parking to head-in parking.
Right.
That does seem appropriate, at least in front of the Little Blue property. There don't seem to be any negative impacts from switching from the existing informal parallel parking layout to a head-in parking. As you see in the application, there are alternatives as far as the formality of the improvements, curb and gutter versus a ribbon curb. And we can get into those details when, if and when you're ready and after the applicant gives a presentation, but just anything Jared you'd like to add on that?
Yeah, so just say, as the applicant represents the current loading and drop-off and pickup occurs in the public right-of-way, and as they've represented by changing this configuration, it's going to continue. And so I think we didn't directly discuss, you know, the increase in loading and unloading in the public right-of-way that would happen by potentially doubling the number of students at this school, but it's part of that larger conversation where there will be additional impacts to the public right-of-way with parking, with loading, with unloading. And so I would say it's kind of captured into that same conversation that we did present in the staff report. You know, I think you could apply the same concerns, the same principles, the same discussion topics of parking to loading and unloading as well.
Great, thanks. And one last question, sorry. Trying to get all this out really quick. Were the neighbors across to the east or to the north, were those alternative parking layouts discussed with them at all and noted? And I know one of those neighbors provided a letter response, but were the specific parking plans shared with adjacent neighbors and discussed?
The applicant can verify that they've distributed the proposed plans to neighbors on all sides.
Okay, great, thanks.
I will add that all property owners within 300 feet were noticed. The packet was available to them on the town's website, and so they did have an opportunity to review the alternatives. So it would just be if additional conversations were had.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for, is more about person-to-person engagement, if that occurred or not. But I can look forward to that. Thank you.
Oh, I see Jared has his hand up. Jared, would you like to say something?
Yeah, my virtual hand. It appears that we're going towards an HCC recommendation in order to help mitigate this parking fiasco that we found ourselves in here. How does that really apply, like when we're, you know, this is what substantial redevelopment is considered, right? So we still have to provide, it says in this table, 100% of that parking, you must meet 100% of that parking. Is that, do we not have to do that because it's HCC? Does it not apply to that chart? I guess I'm a little lost in all this.
So if the property were to be rezoned, both the current lots merged into one lot and rezoned HCC, there would be no required parking for the childcare use? On-site parking?
So by use, though, if we go with what the UDC is stating, it's an expansion, it's considered a substantial redevelopment. Does that not apply here? I mean, we're rezoning here, we have a.
So the HCC Zone District throughout town does not require commercial uses to park their requirement. Only lodging and residential uses in the HCC Zone District are required to meet their parking obligations. And so regardless of the redevelopment, the size, the scale, the magnitude, the use is considered a commercial use per the UDC, and therefore, if rezoned to HCC, would be exempt from having to meet its parking requirements onsite.
Gotcha. But if we, if we kept it CT, then we would be required to meet those.
Correct. Every other zone district in town is required to meet their onsite parking requirements. Is required to meet their parking obligations onsite.
Right. And I know there's like a little subsection that's like, in the case of adversity, you're limited to 80%, but curious to know what these numbers come out to. I'll try to find them in here, but thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions for staff? I do have one more question. Just, then this is kind of building off of Jared's comment as well, just, it sounds like the reasoning behind going HCC as opposed to CT, I mean, because they're so similar, is mainly just because of that parking. So I guess, one, my question would be, would it be, how difficult would it be for the applicant to transition if we were to request CT instead of HCC? How easy would it be for them to transition to using that with a variance on parking?
Good question.
Or would that be a whole nother, like, reapplication process?
Big smile, Kelly.
Parking is subject to alternative compliance findings. There are criteria in the code. It is a Planning Director decision. And it's up to this commission to consider whether that is an option, and perhaps hear from the applicant what their options would be if the zoning were to be Commercial Transitional, both lots merged into a Commercial Transitional lot. Whether the project were to be partially parked with other mitigations, et cetera. It would still require a rezoning for the one lot, the smaller lot, and still a merger, so it's the same array of four applications and similar considerations about the parking impacts.
So then would they just be altering the application that they've already submitted, or would this be a reapplication for them?
In that scenario?
In that scenario, yes.
It would depend if they were changing the envelope of the building and/or the proposal for parking. It would depend on what they decided to apply for as far as how to fulfill that parking requirement.
But the rezoning application, if they decided to pivot, they wouldn't have to reapply to change because we have a notice public hearing, that change can occur with this. There would still be some additional review, and there'd be some additional conversations, but what they are requesting is HCC Zone District, and, you know, at the end of the day, that's their request, and this board has to make a recommendation on that rezoning to the Board of Trustees, and the recommendation could be supporting the HCC, could be supporting ACT Zone District, or could be supporting neither. I mean, so I think that would probably be the best way to handle it. And then that would give the applicant the ability to hear the feedback from this group and make their decision on how they want to proceed. But if they were to proceed with in a CT Zone District and an additional application were required, we wouldn't start the process over. I think we would allow the applicant to submit that alternative compliance request and bring that into the fold, and then make sure that's noticed properly before the Board of Trustees, or if it comes back before this board again for additional review.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. I just want to make sure that if we did encourage them to go to CT, that's not going to set them back a year, because I don't think anybody would really want that. So I guess that was the last question? Oh, we've got Jared again. Hey, Jared.
Mute.
I have one more, and it's about the vested rights. Do we, is there any risk associated for the town with this five-year vested rights, or I guess, like, I'm just kind of confused as to the process behind that?
The applicant can, again, explain sort of the reasoning for that request, but my understanding is that they would like more than a year to fundraise and apply for permits to start the project, essentially. The special use in particular carries a short timeframe, and that's the reason for the request for a five-year vested rights associated specifically with the special use. The other approvals would run with that.
Okay, so if is there? I is is there just another I'll just address my concerns here of like just our term limits here, right? If we make this decision, like that's kind of like our term limits are four years, I believe, or something like that. I just wonder how that will kind of translate in the future. Um but um I'll just reserve the rest of my questions for the app to discuss there.
All right. Well, I think with that, we can move along to the applicant's presentation. Hey, guys. Thank you for joining us.
And I need to share my screen and turn on the camera. Okay. Um hello, my name is Angela Lowry. I am an architect with Influence Architecture. And I am a person working with Little Blue Preschool on this expansion. Also sitting here, I have, this project needs lots of helpers. We have lots of helpers, lots of interested and volunteers and people pulling their weight here. So next to me, I have Patrick Carpenter, who is also a local architect and um parent who has an infant currently at Little Blue Preschool. And then down at that end, we have Michelle Oger, who is the Director of Blue Lake Preschool, the overarching entity that runs Little Blue Preschool. And I am going to turn this over to Michelle, and she's going to tell you a little bit about the Blue Lake program, uh or it teaches what we do. So thank you for having us here tonight. Um my name is Michelle Oker. I've been the Director of Blue Lake Preschool since uh two thousand and two. So so about twenty-one and a half years. Um we started out in Elgabel in the Blue Lake subdivision with three classrooms, a toddler room and and two small preschool rooms. And we've since expanded that program to a hundred and fourteen kids a day. And we serve infants all the way up through schoolagers. So when I say schoolagers, we don't have a private school, but we pick up kids before. We take kids to school before school. We pick them up after school, kindergarten through fifth grade. And we do that at five local elementary schools from Basalt all the way to Crystal River. So in Carbondale, we have Crystal River, Ross Montessori, and Carbondale Community School that we take and pick up kids from. We also do winter break, spring break, summer break, the many, many non-school days that the school district has. Um when parents still need to work, we provide full daycare for those kids as well. So we take them out on field trips. They go rock climbing, they go to gymnastics, Rock Bottom Ranch, Aces. We kind of get them out and about to enjoy the valley that we live in. And we were approached, gosh, about seven years ago to open a school in Carbondale when Faith Lutheran moved out of the the space on Merrill and Eighth Street and moved um to where the old Roine Fork Family Physicians Place, where we were contacted to see if we would expand and continue to offer childcare. Because there's a need for childcare. I'm sure everybody knows that. I'm not going to talk about the great need for childcare. And we moved into that location and we got a special use permit. It was a very quick turnaround on construction. We opened an infant room, a toddler room, and a preschool room in that space. From the time we moved in there, we knew that wasn't an ideal location for us. The home there is very old. It's not suitable for childcare. We removed some walls and things like that, but it it just wasn't an ideal location for childcare. We're we're very um cognizant of of offering childcare because it is such a need. And there's so many working families in our valley who need childcare, but we also want to offer high-quality childcare. We're not just throwing kids into a building. They're not being babysat by anybody off the street every day. So really, looking at the space that we're in, looking at the quality of space we're in, having ample outdoor playground space, having ample indoor uh classroom space is very important to us. So as soon as we moved into that building, we started looking for a location that would be suitable for us. Our program was full right away. Um and there's not a lot of options for childcare locations in the town of Carbondale. Once you have uh indoor space requirements by the state, there's playground space requirements. There's multiple playgrounds that are needed because of the age of the children that we serve. Because of parking, because of parent drop off and pickup spaces, we've searched for probably six years for a childcare space in Carbondale, and there is nothing. We looked at many, many houses. We looked at commercial space. We looked at property down one thirty-three halfway to Redstone to try and find a space that was suitable. And there's not. Um we we came across the spot that we're in now, and we we thought it was a great location. It's close to the Rafter bus stop. It's close to the pool, the park. We walk to True Nature all the time. We walk to the Clay Center. We walk to the library. So it's a great location for the kids to be out and about. Uh you know, we put the infants in the buggy and we're able to walk down the bike path. We walk downtown. We're like the head of the town because everybody loves to see cute kids walk around. So uh that's been great. We we were also interested in this property because we did have the opportunity to expand because it was a large enough lot that we that we could expand. Having an infant room and a toddler room and a preschool room i- is not um financially feasible. The ratios in the infant room and the toddler room are very low. We keep a one to four ratio in an infant room and a one to five ratio in our toddler room to add to that quality. And although childcare is very expensive, um it doesn't cover the cost of the child to teacher ratio ratio for those young classrooms. So our goal has always been to add another preschool room, add a school age room, because those ratios go from a one to four, or one to five, to a one to fifteen. Um so really, you you become, I don't want to say profitable because it childcare is not profitable, but we're at least able to break even and put money back into our program to support our teachers. And so yes, there is a need for additional childcare. We know that. We have parents that are living and working in Carbondale that drive to Blue Lake to pick up their kids. Um all of our school age families have to drive to Blue Lake to pick up their kids after school because we don't have a school age program here in Carbondale. And so the biggest difference between Blue Lake and Little Blue is Blue Lake, we have parents that live or families that live from Rifle all the way to Old Snow Mass, and they're commuting back and forth. They drop off their kids on their way up to Aspen when they're going to work. Um Little Blue, it's such a community school, like it's, they're not all there at seven thirty, like dropping off their kids super fast to get to Aspen by eight o'clock or eight fifteen. People are walking to the school. They're riding their bikes to the school. They they meet out front of the school. They go get coffee after they drop their kids off. It really is a community um environment, and everybody lives here and works here. And um you know, I stand outside the school and I see this open parking lot in the alley. And I'm just like, oh, it's such wasted space when there's such a need for childcare. And our teachers ride the bus and our teachers carpool and our teachers are able to bike to work. And it it it's just, it's so hard to see those parking spots sit empty. And in the front of the school, those four parallel parking spots are empty every day. Um when there's such a need for childcare, and again, going to the quality. Could we get away with a smaller school? We could. Our classrooms are going to be smaller. We won't have a commercial kitchen to provide nutritious meals for the kids, and we'll have one playground that's much smaller, smaller than what we'd like to have. Um so we're we're really torn between could we have written an application that was more acceptable to you all? Yes, we absolutely could have. But I feel very strongly in in doing this for as long as I have, and and this is what I went to school for, is I want Carbondale to have a high-quality childcare program for the people that live and work here. And with the amount of building that's going on in Carbondale without looking at childcare spaces, it's desperately needed. With there's, like I said, we've, we've worked really hard to find another alternative for a childcare space. And there's not anything else here that is um that is doable. I know CRMS had the same problem. When they moved off the campus and moved down here by Marble Stilery, they struggled to find space. And they have a very small program. They have twenty kids a day. Um so to get infants and toddlers quality childcare, to have schoolagers have a place to go to after school, there needs to be accommodations made for childcare in the town of Carbondale. I should have brought water. All right. Now it's not working. Sorry, I'm going to have to stop share and reshare because um somehow the slideshow stopped working. But we will get it working again. There it goes. Oh, now it's working too much. Here we go. We're working. So Michelle touched on the need for childcare. You have fifty letters that describe the need for childcare. Just pulling out a graphic that's in your packet that's from Aspen Journalism. Uh this spring did an excellent series on childcare, showing the number of licensed spots in the valley and the number of need in the valley. So basically twice. And you can see as we get to younger ages, which is how Blue Lake distinguishes itself, Little Blue and Blue Lake, from some of the other programs is that we do take on infants and toddlers. You can just see these little tiny bands for yellow and orange, just so few spots for those younger children. So our design approach to this project has been all about infrastructure. That's all we've talked about here at the beginning. In in addition to the parking and the traffic and the sidewalk infrastructure, we have to look at our mission as um a childcare provider, and we treat childcare as social infrastructure. There's a soft infrastructure that's needed in a town to make it work, as well as all the the hard infrastructure that we deal with so much as designers. So in addition to the the parking and the sidewalks that I'm going to get into, our approach has always been social infrastructure. How can we make good, quality, affordable childcare? Yet, you know, do our part to increase the amount of childcare spaces in Carbondale. So just to orient everyone to the physicality, our location, there we are, the the red circle, and I'm going to zoom in. Um half a block north of Main Street, here we are closer, our our red lines are the the walking paths. And Michelle touched on this. Uh Little Blue kids get out a lot. They take Rafter up and down the valley to different things. The Rafter bus stop is only half a block away. They go to the library, they go to City Hall, they go to the rec center. And all of this is walkable for even our youngest um kids. And so this is a great location for us because of that supports our programming. It's also a great location for our families because we have fifty percent of our families currently bike or um walk their children to for drop off and pickup in the summer. And it's reduced to about twenty percent when it gets a little bit worse in the winter. So it's a great location to um make getting there without a car easier. While this location is just so wonderful for our program and and we love being there, and it's great for our families, it does have some constraints. And these constraints resulted in the whole four reviews, right, that we're talking about. So why aren't we just here for a special use review? And we have to do all the all the others. It's due to, you know, the existing conditions that are there. So let me touch on those really quickly. One is the alley. I think everyone's familiar with this five-point intersection that the alley ends up on. This was a lot of discussion when we first came um for our, when we were originally changing the house to a daycare, that there is staff did not want to create um a condition where cars have to go through that five-point intersection. And so head-in parking was required at that point. We can see our head-in parking here. And generally, physically, we can get more head-in parking in a a frontage than diagonal parking. Unfortunately, where the existing building sat, there was not enough depth to head and park all the way across the face of this building. And so that was kind of our first blow to the qualities of this lot is that trying to help with the you know, the the infrastructure of the town, the the inadequate alley, um created a burden uh and took away some parking opportunities that could have existed on our lot. Our second constraint is utilities, and this is the overloaded utility pool that's at the corner of the alley and Seventh Street. And you can see it goes in three directions, south to main, across the street, and then down the alley. It also has these lovely guy wires that impact parking along the alley and also parking along the street. We have a second utility pool halfway down our property in the alley that also has this lovely guy wire that impacts parking ability. And right now, you can see we are pulling in under the guy wire to actually get to parking. We did talk to Excel about, hey, can't we get rid of these guy wires? And he said, well, sure. If you want to undergrown the utilities on the entire um alley, across the street, and then likely probably north for a couple blocks. So we're talking about hundreds and thousands of dollars of fix in order to kind of get a better access to the property. So due to the alley issues and the utility issues, there's four alley access parking spaces that we could have that just aren't available to us because of the alley directionality issue and because of these guy wires that we just can't afford to address as a as a single organization. Other constraints we have are the street frontage. We have these huge, beautiful Siberian elm trees here. But what they do to the sidewalk is unfortunate. We have a very buckly uh sidewalk on the street. It is also only three feet wide, um so not in keeping with what we would like to see. And so as Kelly had mentioned, you know, part of a commercial proposal, we've got to replace the sidewalk. There's concerns if we actually did replace the sidewalk and didn't do anything with the trees, that whatever we did with the sidewalk might kill the trees, or the new sidewalk would continue to be damaged. Um so this was another constraint on the project. And then the third constraint is our weird zoning condition. This is a survey. So we have our hundred foot by hundred foot lot in the south that was part of the old town Carbondale. And then we have a fifteen foot by hundred and twenty-five foot lot to the north that was part of the Weaver Edition. And then this little hatch line is the um inconsistencies with the original surveying of these two, and they don't agree. So that's why when you add a hundred foot and a hundred foot by a hundred twenty-five foot to fifty foot, you don't actually get the area of our lot. But so this is, but if this property, this flagship property has changed hands as one property throughout its history. This little addition isn't a new thing. Um the original house was built here in a in nineteen fifty-one. Shortly after that, in nineteen fifty-seven, the Ferguson family bought this fifteen feet from the homeowner to the north. And ever since then, all the quick change uh deeds and ownership changes has kept this as one property. But when we look at our zoning map, you can see that little fifteen feet to the north is zoned differently than uh the little bit to the south. Um so that's an unfortunate thing because obviously the zoning came after the property was there. It just seems to be almost an administrative oversight for this particular zoning that but has required that we actually go through a rezoning process to um expand near that internal property line. So what do we do? What are our answers to these constraints? And so our approach has been to try to either mitigate these issues, get rid of them, you know, improve on them, make them entirely better, and also strengthen our goal to create a more social infrastructure for childcare in Carbondale. And that's how we arrived at our proposal that includes a rezoning to HCC. In addition to that, there are some um strengths in the HCC zone district that address the the sidewalk infrastructure um that we think has a, that are stronger than in the CT zone district. Very quickly, I'll walk through the design. This is our existing uh facility. This is our existing uh site plan, and you can see the parallel parking here on the street, four spaces. We do have an existing curb cut that's taking up sixteen feet of um street frontage. So we're kind of monopolizing that now from the public right of way because no one can park or do anything there. He is, so that's one of our parking spaces there. And then we have our six parking spaces off the alley, one of those under the guy wire. And the other one, a very interested uh interesting perpendicular, parallel parking condition here. And these are um existing conditions. This is the view from the alley parking lot. And this is what we're proposing. So in your packet, you have a preferred and an alternate site plan. I'm pretty much abandoning abandoning the alternate site plan at this point unless someone wants to bring it up, mainly because of the feedback we got from the town arbiters, arborist, and uh the tree board, who really liked our preferred site plan. And this is the site plan we came in as preferring to go with. The main difference between those two plans is the trees. Uh we were worried to do a proposal to remove the trees. So we looked at, we kind of kept those two site plans going together. But in this case, we're suggesting removing the three Siberian elms, replacing them with two street trees, large street trees for the town of Carbondale list, putting them in very generous planters that are ten feet wide, uh removing the three-foot-wide sidewalk and replacing it with a five-foot-wide sidewalk that continues the sidewalk from the south. We are taking away, there are four parking spaces that currently exist here, our weird parallel parking. that currently exist here, our weird parallel parking space and more along there. We're keeping two parking spaces in this location. The white gray is existing and the dark gray is the proposed additions. So to the north, there's a proposed two-classroom addition. And to south is just a little bit of a bump out to increase the size of our current infant classroom that is just not meeting the quality of the space we want to see and can't engage more children in that space. So this is the inside. And so the unhatched area is existing and it has blue text with the numbers. The hatched area is proposed and it has the red text with the numbers. So we currently have eight infants in an infant classroom, 18 preschoolers here in the middle, and nine toddlers up there on the north. We're proposing adding two infants in a bump out down here, 11 toddlers and another toddler classroom to the north, and in a shared after-school, school-age program and three-quarter day preschool room with 20 students here.
Sorry, quick question. Where's, where's the entrance?
Sure. Here's the entrance, right there, double door. This is Seventh Street. And this is the proposed head-in parking. There are, you know, egress doors out back and the side of the building, but there's a control, the public can only go through the one door. Or entry. And then here's a chart that lists out all the numbers. So we have our number of children served, which is 68 asterisk 88. I'll get into that here in a second. The number of staff that are needed, and that's our 11 staff, hence the requirement for 11 parking spaces in the CT zoning. And then how these number of children and staff convert to actual car trips that we see during the day. Let me backtrack to the three-quarter day preschool and the school-age aftercare program. So the aftercare program obviously is not all day. So the schoolagers are in school. They come at 3:00, stay till 5:30. They also are there on school breaks, summer break. That presents an opportunity for to use this room to add a program that we currently don't have. And that's a shorter-term preschool classroom. Right now, our preschool is all-day care. This would be a three-quarter day care preschool classroom. And this serves a new need, which is the state of Colorado just started, I'm looking, the Colorado Universal Preschool Program, where it pays for 10 to 30 hours of free preschool for four-year-olds starting this fall. It's estimated that the state of Colorado to go forward with this program needs another 30,000 preschool spaces that don't currently exist in the state. Locally in Garfield County, there are one and a half to two students who want a spot for this care for each spot that exists. So we're looking to dual-use this room and to have either 20 preschool children there or 20 school-age children there, depending on the time of day. So when you look at these numbers, there's only 68 children there at any given time, but 20 of these change at 3:00 in the afternoon. So there could be 88 children there through the span of the entire day. And you can see how this change is addressed in the, the number of car trips kind of sometime in the afternoon. You also notice that we are only saying there's 48 morning car trips and obviously 68 children are somehow getting to the facility. So there are families that have multiple children, right? They don't come in different cars for each child. But we also have those great walkers and bikers. We have staff, some of them who drive and some of them who walk or ride the bus or carpool. And so these 48 numbers based on our existing actual counts of how many cars come to the school, and then we took those same ratios and extrapolated it over the additional children. So this is how we arrived at our 48 children in the morning and the evening. The school-age program that we have in Elgabelle, 90% of those students have a younger sibling at school. So while we're adding 20 childcare spaces, only 10% of that 20 or two car trips could potentially be added for that. And we're expecting similar ratios here because it's, it works for families with younger kids. What do I do with my, you know, my elementary school age person? And so that's how we arrived at our number of car trips.
Quick question. Yeah, just to be clear, you did all this internally? Did you have an external traffic consultant to do some of this for you?
No, we did it internal.
Okay. No engine, no engineering numbers?
There's no engineer.
Nothing been applied? Okay.
No. Although, we did look at the tables by the ITE, so the Institute of Public Transportation Engineering, on their peak hour numbers. And they align very well, like we would call our drop-off period, our peak hour. The first square footage, they're lining very well with that number. I think they said 52, where we're coming out of 48.
Okay, great.
And I'm going to skip over this because Michelle addressed it so well. The cost of childcare, you can see this is the average cost of childcare in the valley. You can see preschoolers are a little bit less than infants, but we know that their cost of care is actually double. So to answer the question of why can't we just do less classrooms for economics and to serve these much-needed low, young kids under 18 months, which many facilities don't serve because of this economic burden, we need to have more older children. And we found that the five-classroom model is one that works to have a financially sustainable program. So we didn't, we're not just coming with one classroom. And that is a very thought-out plan that we really need five to be, first, a financially successful model, but also, you know, if you think the infant is in the classroom for one year and a toddler is in the classroom for two years, you have a case where an infant is old enough and there's not space in the toddler room and you have to ask them to go away, which doesn't work. We want to provide continuity of care. So you kind of have to double your capacity as you go older because those children are in the same age group room for doubling, right? So this is how we get to the, the five-classroom model. Quickly, some, the design. So the, and the model white is proposed. Not going to be a white building, but just for the clarity, to understand what's there and what it is we're proposing. So this is a bird-eye view. This is our existing bump out of the infant classroom, two classrooms to the north. Right now, our parking pretty much aligns with this line. So we're proposing taking away those parking spaces, returning it to playground space. It's about the same area, touch less than what we're building on our existing playground here to the north. Street frontage, we really looked at the HCC design criteria of having transparency along the front facade in connection of the activity, the commercial or service activity to the street. And so our proposed addition, we don't have a ton of street footage in our pro addition, but we are chewing a bunch of blazing into the classroom to really engage pedestrians and cars walking along the street. Similarly, our existing office has that same engagement in our infant classroom and infant play spaces right up front, creating that, that street engagement. Another view of the back and another view of the side. So I'm going to turn it over now to Patrick, who's going to discuss parking, everyone's favorite issue.
Hi again. Yeah, I'm Patrick Carpenter. I'm an architect like Angela. I do have an infant at Little Blue right now, so I have a pretty intimate knowledge with the drop-off pickup experience. I'm just going to walk us through the existing and proposed streetscape that's in front of us. So on the existing side, on the left side here, in front of our property, there is four parallel parking spots. The northeast corner, there's five. Sorry, the northwest corner, there's five, and then the northeast, there's three. The proposed, we're going from four parallel to nine parallel parking spots. That could also be 10 parking spots if we have, if, if we don't need that ADA parking. So nine minimum from four, and then there's also 10 head-in parking spots in the northwest corner, and then seven on the northeast corner. So these streetscapes were going from 12 parking spots to possibly 26, including one ADA spot. Again, I just want to reemphasize, we're going from four in front of the, in front of our property to nine, and it could be 10 if, if we don't have that ADA. And like I said, on the rest of the Seventh Street right now is all parallel, parallel parking. It's not super clear how you park there. As a parent that uses this place daily, you know, you don't drive in and parallel park you like you typically would. A lot of it's just you're pulling in and heading out. So sometimes vehicles aren't spaced the most efficient way, so there's less room to park sometimes. Sometimes people park and they do U-turns. So I think from experiencing the space, doing head-in parking is, is really beneficial for parents because it makes it very easy, you know, where you're supposed to park. You know how to get out and go. So I think, I think this is a great proposal for us. Again, we're, we are removing three of the Siberian elm trees that you can see on the left side. And that, again, is with the blessing of the town arborist and the tree board. And then you can see in the proposed, there's three of the landscaping plantings, sorry, the landscaping areas with planting, it could have art and trees to go along with the Carbondale list, and that also extends out to the rest of the streetscapes in Carbondale. I'll go to the next one here.
I, I hate to interrupt, but on our, on my screen view, I was able to take the the zoom down, so you can actually see the tabs. Is there a way to do that? If not, we can just say it. If it's not easy, that's fine.
Click the top-left button on the zoom on the window of the images.
I think that will be helpful if we can. Yes. And if you could just like down, yeah, perfect.
Yeah. So some, some of the numbers for the traffic and parking, we are adding five to up to nine staff parking in the public right of way. Again, that number is more like five based off of the percentage that use public transportation, walk, ride the bike, use the buses. Adding five in the street parking, that includes one double-wide ADA space. Showing a plan to add nine more spaces in the surrounding north side of North Seventh Street. Let's see here, 113 car trips per day, so that breaks up to a peak hour of 48. So in the morning, it's 48 car trips in and out of there. In the evening, it's 48. And if you were to put that in perspective, if you can compare that to coffee shop, which is 63 trips in one hour, if you could think of it that way. So if people are getting coffee in the morning, the afternoon, maybe in lunch, that's a lot more traffic than what we're proposing. Another number is marijuana dispensaries, 52. And those are very, we have very defined traffic times. So, you know, eight to nine in the morning. There's some around three o'clock that would happen, and then four to five to six o'clock in the afternoon. So again, we think the trade-off of taking the staff parking off, off our property and putting it in the public right of way, and replacing that parking under, you know, you have to pull in underneath those guide wires, replacing that parking with playground space and putting it in front where, you know, the weekends, mountain fair, that's, that's used for everybody. So we think that's really great. The next slide here, we're just kind of showing the existing numbers, the car trips versus the proposed. So you'll see that we're doubling the car trips, but we're more than doubling the children served, which is really great. Again, as a parent, I've already added my name to the waitlist for a baby we haven't even started trying for yet. So you know, it is an issue. Let's see, the last slide. Again, this is just to recap the parking in front. We're basically taking it from where the playground is, putting it on the front, making it head in. It's a lot more efficient, a lot more useful. It's very clear where you're supposed to park and replacing that onsite parking with additional infant space and more playground space. So I'll turn it back to Angela.
And just for comparison, we all know how much space parking takes up. So a parking space is 160 square feet by our state ratios. In that same square footage, we could provide care for three infants, or three toddlers, or five preschoolers. So when you read those 50 letters that say, I don't have childcare, unfortunately, the reality is there is a balance between parking and childcare space. There's only a limited amount of space to go around. So those are the ratios that we're dealing with. So rezoning. The question, one of the questions we're here for, here for tonight, this is the same survey I looked at before where you can see our two different lots on one property. And so originally, it was interesting to hear the questions that you had for staff because it got a little bit out of our process with the town. And we've actually been through four planners on this project. We started with Janet, then we moved to John, then we moved to Jared, and then we moved to Kelly. And it's been challenging for us, but you know, people change jobs and new people come in and new blood. So we've been trying to work through it. So we have discussed just about everything. With our original discussions with prior staff, rezoning requirements to build on this 15-foot lot was not brought up. Whether it would have been brought up when we got kind of further into it, I guess, is unclear. But we were, didn't know just to even make an expansion to the north that we would have to go through a rezoning process because both zone districts allow childcare in a special use format. And the property line is internal. So we were a bit caught off guard that we would actually have to resell. So our first proposal, we did actually look at rezoning many times and decided not to do it because it was spot rezoning and, and Kelly, you know, addressed that. But when we came in, they said, well, you're just going to have to resume anyways, which is, you know, it's a nonprofit. We're doing volunteer work. We're, don't have a ton of money for these proposals and putting forward this work. It's a whole nother review, a whole nother public comment. We said, okay, we've got to rezone anyways. Is there a way that we can make the rezoning process beneficial not only to Little Blue preschool, but to the larger community? So we went back and looked at the comprehensive plan. This is our zoning plan. Here's the zoning plan next to the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is on the left. The zoning plan is on the right. The circle is our approximate area. So if we have to rezone, what did the Town of Carbondale say? They wanted the zone to be, if you're forward-looking, if you're changing property, what should you be doing? And so the 2022 comprehensive plan shows this, but that was just a reaffirmation of the 2013 comprehensive plan. So this part of the block, half of the block between Seventh and, north of Main Street, has for one decade in the Carbondale Comprehensive Plan been a downtown use type. And when I look at these two, the zoning map next to the comprehensive plan, and when I look at their typologies, I think that means HCC. You can see that the majority of the red downtown is in fact HCC in actual zoning. And recent rezonings that have occurred on the 100-block of Main Street rezoned from the CT that was there to HCC reinforcing that reading of this comprehensive plan. So when we learned that we had to rezone and we go back and look at what the comprehensive plan is directing us to do, this is where we came with deciding to come to you with an HCC rezoning. So why, why are we an HCC project versus a CT project? Well, it all goes back to infrastructure. There are many things in the HCC Zone District that address pedestrian access, multimodal transportation, the relationship of the building to the street. And all those things are things we want to do with our program. We want families walking to our facility. We want the town seeing the kids, you know, as they walk by. We want the kids to be able to walk out into the town. And so we're like, this is an HCC use. We see what we do as part of the commercial core. And so joining it to the commercial core made sense to us. And so this is our infrastructure slide reemphasizing that. So we have a clear, you know, Main Street, HCC, Colorado Avenue, a much more developed road to the north. And this is a key connector where we see more improved parking, head-in parking, connecting these two places and kind of knitting together the fabric of these, this part of town that is very close to the commercial core. And the comprehensive plan has directed us for over a decade that it should become part of the HCC commercial core. There were questions about the neighbors. So I don't know if you caught it because they came later in the packet that was just sent out yesterday. Forget. But three property owners, so Amore Realty, 35 North Seventh Street. Forget, but um three property owners, so Amore Realty, uh thirty-five North Seventh Street, six eighty-nine Main Street, wrote a letter that said we want well-defined head-in parking for the entire block of Seventh Street. So that's i- in your packets. And it was, it was good for us to see. We did talk to all those people. We've been talking to them for months, back and forth. Our plans have changed, you know, we we do a little bit of this, we do a little of that, and I kind of email them out. Um so it's good to see that the, these properties here also see the need for this kind of stronger, more defined HCC-style treatment of the infrastructure. So as I stated before, we see childcare as an essential service, and it's not an essential service that necessarily is best suited towards the periphery of our town. It's great downtown. It's great for getting more walking and biking. It's great for getting the children out, and it's great for getting that connection to the town. So there's four main reasons we think this is an HCC project. It corrects what I would call a historical mistake in the zoning and does so in a way that is in keeping with the comprehensive plan. It provides clear improvements to the infrastructure that does not only benefit us, but it benefits the entire community. It cre- makes childcare an integral part to the downtown core, reinforcing that link between providing quality childcare and having happy uh residents and happy employees in your town. And it's also a very gentle rezoning. HCC could be property line to property line and three stories high. That's not what we're doing here. So we're mindful of the residents to our north and in trying to do an HCC project that also is cognizant of the area around it. So in summary, we want, we're looking for you to help us strengthen and beautify Carbondale's social and physical instru- infrastructure with play spaces rather than parking spaces. Create and enhance biking, walking, and bussing, and get our budding citizens, our kids, um out in the town. And I am done. We are happy to take questions.
All right, awesome. Thank you guys so much. Um do we have any questions for the applicant?
I will go first. I I think there are some uh some pretty good options here and strategies for you know, pro- parking alternatives or mitigation or anything like that. One of them in which is, you know, discussing with CMC and sharing parking with that lot. Um can you express a little bit more? Has there been any actual conversation with CMC on this, or is this just a theory? And if there have been conversations, uh what, is there anything that you could like illustrate uh of how this would collaborate appropriately?
Sure, um yes, wait, can you hear me? Yes. We have um discussed with CMC a shared parking um possibility. They have expressed that they can only spare five spaces of parking spaces, and they would like to charge us rent uh for those parking spaces. Um so we even have an agreement of five parking spaces at three dollars a day. So it's about a five thousand-ish dollar annual continual cost that would be to do that. We discussed with town staff this alternate um parking, multiple town staffs, this alternate parking compliance. Um they were cautious in their direction on it, I would say. One, the PUD for CMC has an agreed amount of parking that they're supposed to provide. What is there is what's in agreement. It's not like they have an excess uh per their uh PUD agreement. Although if you drive by CMC and you see it during the day, while we would be using those spaces, it's it's an underutilized parking lot right now. So the, there could be a study that could show um that sharing possibility. Um those five spaces doesn't get us to our entire parking spaces we need. Um it did not, and the other thing in discussing with town staff, the um while it's clear, the parking requirements in the HCC Zone District that's codified in the UDC, the alternate compliance path isn't quite so well cod- codified. There is a shared parking compliance path, but that is only available to the HCC Zone District. So our discussions kind of left like we weren't entirely sure if it would be an acceptable way forward. Um it has an ongoing cost that ultimately would be more than the public right-of-way improvements we're proposing, you know, one-time costs, and it didn't get us to all of our parking needs.
And just sort of staying in that area, I think one of the the proposed, I think, uh there was the side-by-side of, you know, Seventh Street just being completely filled with uh head-in parking. Um this is a two-part question. Your, your neighbors that you've been discussing with here, um are they asking that you foot the bill for all of these parking spaces and all this development? Is that what I'm understanding from them saying that they would like to see head-in parking here? And then I'll finish up with my second part after that.
I don't think so. Um they never told us that directly. Uh when I read the letter from, and it's not all the neighbors, we have our neighbor to the north here, um Bill LaMell, who can speak to that and um I did discuss with them this idea of head-in and it's their residence, so there was a concern of headlights uh going into their windows there. So I'm not sure entirely what they think of that other than that concern. Um so I don't know that the other commercial properties like the idea of head-in and and having clarity to parking, whether that would be a cost that they thought we should bear.
So just, just to be clear, who would pay for all of that paving? And curb and gutter?
Well, what we are proposing that directly in front of our property, that we are going to make that improvement, and that will be our cost.
So only for those nine spaces?
For the nine spaces.
Okay.
And in, it's not clear on some of the graphics, but in the written report, that could be either a ribbon, you know, flush, or it could be a curb and gutter. The ribbon uh flush style is is less cost inhibitive to us. Um other than that, we don't particularly have a preference. It's more that we're trying to work with the town of Carbondale on the streetscape they want to see. And so we're kind of throwing the idea out there and to the neighbors and to tell, you know, to get some feedback is, is what do you want here? We want it more organized and we want it beautified, but there's many ways to do that. And so right now, we're not proposing paving except at the ADA parking space, that it would be a permeable surface with either curb and gutter or a ribbon flush style uh parking.
So ju- just to clarify then, so the um the slide that we saw that showed the proposed conditions um that is showing the entire street, that's actually not proposed, that's more of a theoretical.
That's a theoretical.
Okay.
Um because in talking with um the neighbors, we couldn't agree on a ton of things, but everyone could agree like parking kind of really sucks here. So anyway, we can organize it. So we did look at it in a holistic way, and I'm gonna have to stop and reshare in order to get this to work again, unfortunately. Um so any type way we can um look at it in a more holistic manner. Um we just wanted to see that picture. Also, you know, are there clearance problems, right? Can you get head-in parking on one side of the street and head-in parking on the other side of the street and not be banging into each other? And we worked with Silvers Intergenering on that, who volunteered a lot of their expertise to say, yes, this meets our, our standards for that, and this is kind of how it would look. Um so you can, yeah, okay, there we go.
I just hit the
We'll get that, we'll get that graphic back. It's okay. That's all right. Yeah, so we just wanted to say, you know, we're willing to do our part directly in front of the property, but when you kind of start doing that, it kind of begs what's happening with the rest of the street, and I think creates the opportunity for a partnership with the town to continue making those improvements.
Um I guess that might uh push me into my next question then, just because uh the road is kind of really narrow right in front of your um your proposed conditions in the right-of-way. Um it, so it's, it's, you can, on your drawings, it shows the existing edge of asphalt, and it's about three feet into your parking spaces. And I guess my concern is that is there adequate space uh in the right-of-way uh behind all, bu- behind your parking spaces and connected with that as well as that um the sidewalk isn't pushed up against your property line? Is there, would it be difficult to move that whole parking agenda up against property line? Cause then it would actually align with the uh the parking spaces to the south and you wouldn't have uh you know, it actually, the road would actually be straight as opposed to bumping out and around your development.
Where's the sidewalk connected?
The sidewalk is it would just shift west because there's another two to three feet uh of right-of-way between the sidewalk and
Yeah, it's a great question, Jay. Thank you for asking.
So what is on the drawing here is showing the existing edge of the sidewalk that butts the street stain in the same place and widening the sidewalk two feet back towards the property, which results in, I think, about eighteen inches, I guess, between the sidewalk and the property line. We discussed a lot with staff. They would prefer to see it directly along the property line. And that generally is fine. It results in a really weird condition up at the top where you run into that three-foot sidewalk that's existing. Um those two sidewalks only overlap each other by one foot, so you're kind of have to jog the sidewalk, I guess, at that point. Um just looking at it from a design standpoint, if that work wasn't gonna happen up there, it seemed nicer to kind of um have the jog happen across the alley as opposed to a hard jog and a hardscape in a very small amount of place. So that's where it ended up where it was. The public, the right-of-way there, seventy-five feet, we have a five-foot sidewalk, we have an eighteen, say nineteen, I forget, our, our standard um parking depth, a twenty-five-foot drive aisle that it changes because everything's not that great there. So at some points, it's twenty-five foot, sometimes it goes to twenty-seven foot, and then the other side would have that same um dimensions that you can have a sidewalk, which doesn't exist there, but there is room for a five-foot sidewalk in the standard uh depth. But generally, you would only have a twenty-five-foot drive aisle, give or take, depending on the vagaries of the existing condition.
Sure. Um any other questions for the applicant?
Um I guess I have um my final question, I guess, with regard to to parking here is um so we're only really guaranteeing nine public parking spaces for, what is it, one hundred and thirteen children is what we're expected to to meet. Um I guess I, I don't know if there was an RFP sent to um a parking consultant in this, but perhaps uh you know, maybe like a drop-off aisle or something. Has that been considered? Was that, I guess I'm not sure of how parking really situates with, if you come in and you leave, if it, it's truly just come in and grab your kid and head out.
Okay, yeah.
Were the considerations to that?
So let me tell you a little bit of drop-off and pickup. Unlike at elementary schools where you can like do a kind of a kiss lane, like kind of pull in and kick the kid out and say goodbye, and they can get their way into the school. It's, it's required uh by state that the parent has to actually walk their child into school, sign them in, bring all their stuff in. So they are, uh the parents are parking, exiting the vehicle, walking in, dropping the child off and coming out. How long that takes kind of just depends on the kid and the age they are. Sometimes they don't let you go.
Yeah, and if it's, if it's a dad or a mom.
And also, you know, with the infants, it's a little bit harder to get them transitioned. So the amount of time uh any given car sits there could be quick, you know, three minutes, and it could be longer, fifteen minutes, ten, fifteen minutes. Um so that's the pattern of the drop-off and pickup there. Did we talk to a parking and/or traffic consultant? Uh no, we did not. Um did we consider a drop-off aisle? Um there's no room to do that. Well, first, we, we were directed by town staff that we cannot have parents driving down the alley. Um the building exists, you know, before we did the addition to it, exists where it does um at that close to the street. There's not room on the street side of the existing building to do a driveline on our property. So a driveline drop-off aisle would have to have happened in the public right-of-way, which seems like even a greater burden of removing uh publicly available parking that could be done for everyone for this driveline that's uh used uh for a couple hours a day. So we didn't really explore that just because it didn't seem like we have enough space. And we're having the families always use the public parking for drop-up and pickup for short periods of the day, and then maybe did that answer everything?
Yeah, um I guess just hmm maybe more of a concern here, uh but a quick question for staff, Jay, is that okay?
Uh yeah, that's fine.
What, I can't remember, and I can't seem to find the email um of it, but what did, what did the fire department, uh did they have any commentary on this?
Bill was, um Bill had no commentary on it.
Okay. Cause the, I mean, the road's twenty-four foot eight. Um and if we have that all on parking, I'm just concerned of, you know, if there's kids being dropped off in a fire truck to get here, that's I don't know. That's not my pay grade. That's not my specialty. Um I, I do think that should be something that is considered though. It's how narrow that street is.
Yeah, and uh I, I do, I mean, I do want to mention just that I know we are talking a lot about parking, and I know that that seems like it's kind of excessive what we are talking about, but I think it's more that, I mean, at least me personally, I just want to make sure that it's a safe zone, like of all places to be safe. I just want to make sure that there is adequate circulation around this building, just so that we don't have people getting really angry and flying around and, you know, I, I think that's just the main concern here is um is safety. And I think that that's kind of a big part of parking. I know that a lot of the time, it can be like, it might seem like we're just being worried about something silly, but there is, there is something to it that I just want to make sure that we're not overlooking, I suppose, and so.
So I, I just, so to that point, the point, really, safety for children. It is the point safety for children getting in and out of cars. Um we could take a good, hard look at what's happening over at Sopris Montessori as a precedent study. They don't have, they have kind of diagonal parking. It's kind of that half-and-half solution between parallel parking and head-in parking. They have, I think, eight spots in front of Sopris Montessori. They have no sidewalk inboard of the parking. So children don't know whether to go in front of the car that's parked or behind the car that's parked because there is no designated walking zone. Um and I think that this is, and it, 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 it was, it was sketchy. It's, it's a little sketchy. For kids, and I think for adults watching the kids try to navigate that on their own. They're a little bit older. Some of them are a little older, some of them a little younger. Um but um I think the key is the sidewalk. Right? And having designated walking, once you get out of your car, you know where to go. Um so this is vastly better with that sidewalk than, you know, at least what what we experienced at Sopris Montessori.
Totally. Um sorry, I, I don't mean to cut you off. I just want to, I want to make sure that we're kind of, I think that this is a great discussion that we should, I think, have once uh everybody can have their say, because I know these guys are just waiting to bite at that mic, so.
Yeah, one more quickie.
Quick question?
For staff.
Oh, okay, good question.
In doing a little prep for this, um there is a small at-home childcare facility over by G90 Park um that town staff within the last Um, that town staff within the last year, I believe, modified parking um, policies for. And I'm wondering can you share that with us? What 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 happened there?
Um.
Walt Kinder?
Yes, thank you. Walt Kinder. That now, or was Walt Kinder or another one of them up in that neighborhood?
It's Walt Kinder on Surrey.
Yes, so you you can, parents can no longer park in front. They have to park a block or so away. This was directed by the town. And now they have to walk a block. I mean, I was just wondering for a precedent here.
I'm not aware of that until this moment, so let me look into that and I can.
It's being operated at somebody's house.
I can.
No, I know.
But that's not great precedent.
Well, hey, we're talking about parking. We're talking about kids' safety. I'm looking for any precedent I can this time right now. So just to be totally clear.
Gotcha.
Right, um.
If it if it helps at all, there is the comparison of the um, the the place that's down by Marble Distillery, uh, which they legitimately have no parking.
Right.
And um, from what I recall with those meetings, I, that was a long time ago. I think it was like when I first started on P and Z board.
Right.
Um, but an exception was made just because of our dire need for childcare. And so, you know, this is kind of a fine line of where we need to decide on, you know, parking its priority. And then also, uh, as Angela has mentioned, just, you know, that this is a soft infrastructure for our town and it is important and trying to find that balance. So um. Are we? Do you think we can move this on to a public comment?
I have one quick question, just not related to parking.
It better not be.
It's not.
It better not be.
Uh, with the rezoning and the discussion with staff uh regarding the spot rezoning, did you talk to your neighbors to the uh west about HCC and the impact of that in the future?
Yeah, so we talked to Jay Walker Lodge, who owns the the building on Main Street and then the the house directly south of us. We talked to um Bentley, the Shade Salon space that's no longer a Shade Salon space. Um. To look, is there a partners? And we also reached out to the the Fourplex condominium that's right behind us, but we're actually never able to have a face to face conversation. If anybody else was interested in going to HCC. And basically, nobody else was. And the reasoning given, one, the Jay Walker Lodge had just finished there. Um, I forget if it was a special use or or a different review with the town of Carbondale to convert the single family to a group home. So I came in, I think, weeks after they had just gone through a long process with the town and they're like, no, thank you. We don't want to get involved in that again. We're happy where we're at. Um, also, you know, HCC right now has a restriction or a discouraging of residential on the grand floor. And so in particular, that group home, you know, that was kind of counter to what they want. The their other facility is is more of an office space that that has um, you know, more commercial um aspects on the ground floor. But I think they were just a little tired, you know, didn't see the need. They had their parking in the rear. They were happy with where they were at. Um, Bentley's here, he can tell you, but he, what he expressed to me is, you know, he's happy with the zoning he has. He likes the uses that were allowed are allowed in CT and um wasn't interested on jumping on a a rezoning that way.
Okay, thank you.
It wasn't about parking.
It wasn't.
Good work.
Keeping on.
All right, any last questions for the applicant? Going once, going twice. Okay, let's open this up to the public. Um. Thank you guys for all waiting so long as we work through all this. Um. I don't know if you all all just want to get in a line, uh, but no, I'm I'm just kidding. Um. But if uh, for whoever wants to come up and uh state, make a statement, um, if you could step up to the podium, please. Um, and if you could please state your name and your address uh prior to your statement, please. And um, just because of time sake, I'm gonna limit everybody to three minutes just so that it's fair for everybody. Um, and that we're not here until eleven o'clock.
I'm speaking on behalf of three people, so I get nine minutes.
Um, provided a letter. We don't want to hear the letter.
Right. Um, also, if you've already provided a letter, um. If you, um, we we've all, of course, read those letters, so you know, please don't read your letter and uh to us because uh, yeah, we're just already, what what time is it? Eight forty? Um, so, so, yeah, uh. You may go.
Thank you. My name is Lynn Kirchner. Um, I live in two places in town. I own Amore Realty, so at seven one one Main Street, which is a neighbor to the daycare. And um, I actually have a shower that I go home to at six three six Surrey Road, which is across the street from the Kinderwald. And if there has been something that's changed about their parking and dropping off, I have yet to see that. So um. Couple of things, I did write a letter. I'm not gonna read it. Everyone has a copy of it. I wrote it on behalf of three business owners. Um, myself owning Amore Realty. Um, Sopris Crossings, which is the owner of thirty-five North Seventh Street, you refer to them as uh Jay Walker Lodge. And um, the owners of six eighty-nine Main Street, which is um the Giannetti family. And we were concerned about parking. And we're not going to talk about parking, but we were concerned about the safety and the parking, but in no way did our concern about parking support HCC. So I just want to clarify what you said earlier. That was not the case. We were concerned about parking because we were concerned about parking did not mean we supported HCC transition. Um, also, HCC Main Street is very different than the profile of an HCC on Seventh Street. Um, HCC on Main Street, when you see buildings connected to one another, zero lot line to zero lot line is very, very different than walking through a partial residential neighborhood. And um, you know, one building that was residential converted to um commercial. So it's it's a very, very different approach, a very, very different look. Um. The other that came up in the discussion here this evening that you know, in in parking and in coming and going up and down Seventh Street. If you were to stand on Main Street and Seventh and look down and you can see on the east side of Seventh Street, cars park head in, cars park head in on my building. We have maintained our parking space since we renovated that building in two thousand and six. We shovel it, we gravel it, we take care of it. Um, and we share it. And so our concern with expansion is where are these people gonna park is that we have nine offices in my building. Jay Walker has clients that come and go from their building at thirty-five North Seventh. And if people are coming and going, um. We just need to be considerate of one another and the spaces that we use up and our clients and to educate our clients and the people that come to our buildings. And so uh, whether that's parents, whether that's teachers or daycare workers, whatever it is. Um, you know, we're excited and hopeful to see six eighty-nine come alive again. We're, we want to see our community have that coexistence. And that means sharing the parking and helping with that. So um, you know, we have not spoken as neighbors directly with the daycare since probably they first came on board. We had a short conversation a little while ago, a year ago. Um, which we had extra supplies. But open communication is so key to the success of what we're doing in our community.
Thank you, Lynn.
I think you've got your work cut out for you.
Ah, all right. Good evening, everyone. My name's Ian. Um, we have a uh toddler.
Sorry, Ian, where you, where do you live?
Uh, live on Maroon Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Thirty-four Maroon Drive. Um, cool, yeah, so we have a, we have a toddler in the in the toddler room right now. She was in the infant room last year. Um, and you know, like we were so lucky to get in. I I don't know how we pulled it off. Um, but we just, we've, you know, all in all, we feel very fortunate to be at Little Blue, to to have that spot at Little Blue. Um, so let me just uh. Yeah, so you know, I I know not everybody at Little Blue lives in town. We are fortunate to live in town, less than a mile. Um, we walk, I uh, I walk or bike um most the, most days. And you know, I I I love seeing other people do that too. And I I I think we have a a good little group that that does that pretty, pretty regularly. So that's, that's special, I think, um, to a daycare, not something we expected. Um, you know, my wife or I, my wife and myself, neither of us have to drive to work. So we put zero cars on the road all day and and we're just like, like, that's just, that's just really cool. I mean, I I I love that about Carbondale and where we live um and having the daycare there. So yeah, I mean, we're really excited for our toddler to continue moving up and to continue to have experiences in town. Um, being able to walk places and um, you know, like the park, we pick up our child almost every day and uh, we pick up our child every day. Almost every day. Almost every day, we take her, take her somewhere like in town, uh, most Sopris Park or, you know, just down Main Street and she, that's just really special for her, just to sort of be out and about in the community. Um, you know, in a, in on her, in a stroller or walking or or um uh, in, you know, in in our, in our bike and she's in the, she's in the carrier. So that's, that that's special for us. Um. Uh, on a, on a very personal note, um, the the Blue Lake Preschool Community has meant a lot to us. Um. In this year specifically, we had a four month old son who was at Little Blue in the infant room. And we lost him back in January. Um, he only had the opportunity to go like a a a couple of weeks. Um, so we would have had two kids and um, you know, obviously. So we are just so thankful for like the humanity of the leadership at at uh Blue Lake Preschool. Um, the empathy that they have exhibited. I know that has nothing to do with zoning, but um it's just, it's just a a a personal, um, you know, a a a personal note on that one. Um, so yeah, in conclusion, you know, the only, it's a, it's a, it's a truly incredible resource for us, for my family, for the town. Um, we just wish more people could could take advantage of that. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Hey there, uh, Alex DeGolia, six eighty-seven Surrey Road. I'm a Surrey folks here tonight. I did. Um. I'm also a Little Blue parent. Uh, my wife, Tarn Udall, and I send our three year old there.
I mean, Ian, you you got me emotional for no reason.
Uh, so uh, we send our three year old there. We've sent him since June of twenty twenty. Uh, it's been an incredible resource for us. We both work full time. The fact that we have uh daycare and then a preschool that really is like supporting his education. Um, you know, that we're able to drop him off early if we need to for meetings, pick him up at five uh, in the evening is just, it's an incredible resource. Tarn would be, Tarn was able to grow up here. We're incredibly lucky to be able to uh, to raise our kids here, our kid here. Uh, not to be too on the nose, but Tarn would be here and be more eloquent than I am, but she's thirty-nine weeks pregnant. And so is very tired and sleeping right now. Uh, we are on the waitlist for Little Blue with our second, but we do not have a spot yet. And uh, would really love to send her to Little Blue. I mean, it's just an incredible community. Sort of to Ian's point, you know, we uh often bike uh Wallace to to preschool, uh especially when it's nice out. Uh, on first Friday, we'll pick him up and we'll take him downtown or we'll go to Papino's after uh school. It's just an an amazing thing to have in downtown Carbondale. Um. One other note, and this is anecdotal. I am not a traffic engineer by any means, but um. To to my mind, having those nine spots where you can actually pull in with children who have to get into the side doors, especially if you have two kids getting in either side door seems substantially safer to me than the parallel, where often you have to have a kid go around onto the street in order to get into their, you know, child seat from the street side. So I know that nine is not eleven. Um, but I'm hopeful that we can sort of err on the side of wanting to increase childcare in Carbondale, in particular in downtown Carbondale, which is just incredibly vibrant and we love. Um, and thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Garrett Laramo. I live at nine two four Wheel Circle. Um, first of all, thank you guys for all your time on the commission. I know you guys spent a lot of hours looking at packets and talking about parking and it really does make a difference. So thank you for your time and thank you guys for all the time you've put into this. Childcare is so important in our community. Um, and it's really complicated, as are a lot of the really important issues in our community, like affordable housing and affordable places for people to gather with restaurants. It's, it's damn complicated. And when you deal with really complicated problems, I, there's a statement that I always think back to that when you're dealing with complicated issues, there's no solutions, there's only trade offs. And I think that's, it sticks with me so much in this valley because there's no perfect eloquent silver bullet to address the problems that we face and we all have to to make sacrifices in some areas. I live in Wheel Circle. I don't know if people are familiar with the parking in Wheel Circle, but it's not exactly ideal. And if it were up to a parking engineer to design parking in Wheel Circle, I guarantee you I would not have a place to live in this community. And so as important as parking is, people are important too. And that's kind of what we're dealing with. It seems like here, there's so many things at stake. There's state um licensing requirements. Uh, zoning requirements, healthcare require or uh environmental health requirements. There's a lot and this is not easy. And so I just would encourage you all to um really continue to work hard on this, to not let parking be the linchpin of providing extra childcare spaces. There are so many levers that have been discussed here on how additional child capacity can be achieved and whether it's HCC or CT, a parking waiver, whatever it is. I really encourage you to work as hard as you can to put people first, put people over parking and find an eloquent solution to deliver solid outcomes. Um, yeah, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett, for that great lead in because I'm a person too. And I agree, I'm I'm probably a person that made a lot of you want to live here, you know, helped contribute to this incredible community. So this is hard. I I love Little Blue. I don't, I think we do need childcare. I am happy that Little Blue is there. The neighborhood used to be three neighbors and I I did get emotional tonight listening because I remember Fergie and I remember Brian and we had a neighborhood and I I don't, we're the only house there now. So I've been listening all night and I have to say, except for Angela, no one really has come and talked to me about this. No one has really checked in with me over two years. How does it feel? How do you do, you know, how's it going, Amy? That that's kind of hard. Our house is a historical house that's been there since eighteen ninety-one. We're good neighbors. Most of you come and drop off your kids. You don't even say hi if I'm walking by. Like, you know, I I gotta be honest, you know, I I don't feel the that like, hey, how's our neighbor? How's it going? So it's, it's, that part is a little hard. Um, I am totally against HCC zoning. I don't want cars face in. It's, it's okay. I already look at CMC. And I love hearing the kids. I love that you guys have a place. And I love hearing the kids. I love that you guys have a place for your kids. I want childcare. I mean, we are looking at Town Center. Maybe there's places there that we need to look at childcare and expand. I, I think. I'm an advocate for all of this, but I do want to really be considered as the homeowner right there and a good neighbor. Um, that's going to be the only neighbor on that block. I understand it. I want to see six eighty-nine go. I want to see these guys be able to have a little more room, but not at the expense. Of, that we're human people too and that we really love this town and we love this community. We love Seventh Street. We love all of you. We just want to be really considered in the, in this, in this, uh, change of zoning. And we do not want head-in parking. That, I, I mean, I don't know. That was the first I saw. When you talk about like, oh, then we're going to expand. And this is going to be good for Carbondale. That makes me feel really bad. Like, wow. They, they're not even thinking of how it's going to feel and you're showing this picture of all these cars head, headfirst and. I am not going to change my sidewalk. I don't have the money. I can't. So I don't know how this jog is going to go or how it's going to look. So I'm into helping make this happen. I'm, you know, without really taking away from this incredible. Um, community and neighborhood that I live in. So. Please don't change it to HCC. I'm willing to work with CT and see how we can make it work. I don't, I don't even mind, like the two buildings. All that's going to break is my view of the J-Walker guys working out, which does not mean much to me. You, my gay friends, maybe will be sad, but, uh.
Thank you.
I've just, yeah. So I'm just saying, I'm just pleading with you guys.
Amy, for the quick record, those of you who don't know you, maybe, uh, your address in full name.
Oh, eighty-five North Seventh Street.
Is that possible that we, we don't know you?
Some, yeah, no, a lot of people don't.
Thank you, Amy. Yeah, she, uh, to the north, so the head-in lights on the northwest would face into that property, her property.
Good evening, Bentley Henderson, forty-six North Eighth Street. Um, I'm at the opposite end of the alley from the property and. My view of this is a little bit dispassionate from the daycare and from the kind of the comments that have gone on before. I would like to applaud the applicant though for not using the guy wire space as one of the ones they're keeping. Because you can only get a smart card in there. I mean, it's so small and so tight. So thanks for giving that one up. Um, the. What I wanted to kind of. Talk about was the zoning issues as well as the one thing that kind of jumped out at me as I was reading through the, uh, application. And that's the vesting. And I know that there are challenges with raising money and, and getting money together to do a project like this. But a five-year vesting is a big deal because this project or this property is going to get entitled with whatever this commission decides. Whatever the Board of County Commission, or excuse me, the Board of Trustees chooses to do. And five years is a long time and can create, uh, some challenges in and of itself. And so that's a, that's something I think would be, uh, want to be careful to look at because they can always come in and look for. Getting their, their vesting extended. But if you start out at that kind of a term, it certainly provides an entitlement. Uh, for who knows what else might happen, which leads me to my next point, and that's, uh, the zoning, the zoning change. Um, and, and Angela mentioned it, they, this property, if the zoning is changed to historic commercial core. Uh, then changes the entire dynamic of that parcel, the thirty-five-foot, um, height limit. And the nature of the uses that could, could occur. And I'm not saying that that's what they'll do, but again, it's that entitlement piece. And so I would just caution, uh, the commission on looking at or understanding, um, what the impacts of. Some of these changes might be. And, uh, to Garrett, I believe is his name was, point about the parking and, you know, you look at Barbara Drive, Wheel Circle. It, the, the parking is the tail that wags the dog. And so the challenge that you run into on all of these is. Who's the beneficiary of the change? And if you're making people park on their property, they have to think a little bit differently about their use. If you give them street right-of-way for parking, it changes that dynamic. And so again, it, they all kind of fit together in terms of. Um, utilization of the parcel and what this commission and what the, what the Board of Trustees do. In terms of allowing and expanding those uses. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other takers?
Not written on here. I can add that if that helps.
Hello, my name is Amanda Martinez and I live at four-six-one South Third Street, Unit E here in Carbondale. I'm fortunate to live in the teacher housing. I'm a teacher for the Roaring Fork School District. In fact, I'm an instructional coach. I work at both Carbondale Middle School. And Roaring Fork High School. And I'm a mother of two children who benefit from the services at Little Blue preschool greatly. I'd like to quickly address the UPK demand. Um, I'm speaking more as a, uh, a teacher now than as a mother. The UPK demand and the spots that are needed in preschools that are not existing, which was addressed by the present. Beautiful presentation that Angela and Patrick put together. Um, as a teacher, I'm ending my eleventh year. That what we notice about students coming into school and the students who do not have access to preschool is. The vast differences in instruction and, um, learning that we need to provide to our students. What this UP, these, this school age room and expansion will offer to underserved students. And our diverse community in Carbondale is. Is going to make the profession of teaching. More manageable and put students on a leveller playing field. Our population currently at Little Blue is not as diverse and is not as reflective of what I see. At Roaring Fork High School and Carbondale Middle School. But the expansion will allow for. More opportunities for diverse students to come in. And the parking restraints that we're conversing. And the potential pause or challenge this poses is that this UPK demand is immediate. And it's going to be put in action this fall. My, my, my four-year-old son will benefit from UPK. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what is UPK?
Sorry.
Thank you.
This is a flaw of teachers as we get in jargon, universal preschool. And it allows for students to have for qualified for, any four-year-old in the state of Colorado to have ten, fifteen? Fifteen hours of preschool at no, no cost to them.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll add my name quickly.
Are there any other members of public that want to speak? Um, do we want to, I guess the question is if we are to continue this to another meeting? Do we want to close the public hearing? Do we feel like we've heard adequately from? From the community?
Are we, right, are we continuing and then would we?
Also, if we, if we close the pub, if we close the public comment, uh, then you're not supposed to reopen it. So I, it's, it's in a way like, as long as we feel like. I mean, I feel like we had a fair amount of community input. Right now, we have a lot of neighbors and we have a lot of members of Little Blue, so.
Around the circle.
I agree.
Yep, I agree.
So that means if it's continued, then there's no more public comment.
Correct.
It's just P and Z discussion and staff.
What needs to be a beginning, a middle and an end of this?
Right.
Right, right. Make a motion to close the public comment session.
Second.
Nick and Nick, all in favor?
Yeah.
All right, let's speak amongst ourselves.
I'll start.
Sounds great.
I'm gonna need a second or two, but actually I want to look at you folks out there who have showed up tonight with some really passionate and thoughtful comments. I, I feel my heart twisting over this. I do, like, I, especially Ian. You got me, right? Um, it's not about parking, although for my day job. I'm an urban designer and I design spaces like this for a living. Okay, so I'm like, I'm thinking about it. I think about our community and the precedent that we're setting or trying to set. I have two little kids. I know your pain, your challenges. It's like, it's right there. My son just got back from his first overnight as an elementary school kid. And I actually didn't hang out with him to sit with this packet. To see if there's a way I could recommend for us to figure this out. Like, so my heart is here for all of you right now, as well as you, my fellow commissioners. Like, I'm like, proper on this, trying to figure out like. How do we like, support our community in one of these primary needs? It's not about parking for me. It's about a growing town. Faster cars. And my three-year-old who almost got run over on Soprus just this last little bit. Because we were riding in a bike lane and someone didn't like that. And so they wanted to peel out around my whole family and almost take them out. This isn't the first time it's happened in a year to us. Happened on Main Street as well. So we talk about, you know, we love living here, right? Just like you all do, who are, you know, we have this gift. And my concern isn't the parking, it's the idea of, the idea of congestion, the idea of weather, snow, ice. How does this stack up? When we think about two narrow travel lanes and a ton of little kids. And I'm like, literally honestly emotional about this. Cause I'm, I'm trying to figure out how do we get safety and kids and support this? And yet, like, I'm honestly like concerned that it could, it could go really bad. Like, yes, there is the vesting. Yes, there are these very kind of, you know, development-oriented concerns. HCC versus CT. What will it set? What is able to happen if that, that zoning change occurs and. The, the value of Little Blue, does it stay there? Does it, you know, does it sell off? And what does that open the door on? I'm not going into any of that right now. I'm just going into the, I'm, I'm going human. And I'm going into this idea of. Gosh, it's eighty kids. In that area of town, right off Main, we don't know what's happening with downtown North yet, those traffic patterns. I would have loved to have seen a circulation study, you know, someone who's stamping something and saying, like, hey, here's the real deal on this. I, I thank you for recommend, you know, at least responding to the ITE and pulling from that. But it's a lot for me. It's a lot for me to see all this come together and to think and to be, to have two little kids. And to see the close calls that have happened in my own life at our precious little community. I, I'm just really challenged. Um, and then there are some neighbors, you know, that have, ha- have some comments. I want to figure this out. I want to understand how we can support our community with something like this. And I, I, I don't know if it's here yet. There's a lot of questions. Who's paying for things? How is this happening? How are these responsibilities being shared? I hear a lot being asked for. I get it. You're carrying a big mission. And I, I totally want to support you in that mission and what you, the gift you give to us as parents and young families. I just don't know if it's quite there for me yet. Um, I'm coming out big here. I'm, I'm just, I had to because I'm spilling out of my heart, right? So that's where I'm coming from. I'm going to lay that down and take a breath. Got it out. Um, that's where I'm at.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's, I think we all are, now, I totally agree with, thank you. I totally agree with you. I had a boy who went to Blue Lake preschool. It was a great experience. It was in Blue Lake, so it wasn't quite the same situation. And then he switched over to Soprus Monastery and we had a close call with a car backing out. It was, you know, it's a real, it's a real issue. So I'm with you a hundred percent.
Right.
Um, but nuts and bolts here, um, I'm going to try and bring this back to, you know, bring this conversation back to, uh, you know, some sort of process. And how we're going to have, how we're going to organize this discussion. I think that's important. I mean, we're here to discuss four topics. Each of them has a, a review criteria. You know, each review criteria has, you know. A subset of four or five, you know, items that we need to address. How do we want to go about this? You want to just start on the top and, you know, talk about the first one, which is. On page fourteen of one hundred and seventy-one of the packet. Um, sorry, fifteen, rezoning application.
This is the most organized you've ever been, Nick.
That is not true.
It's incredible right now.
I'm loving it. I'm loving it.
Yes. I, I like that approach.
Yes, I agree. Okay, I, I'm just gonna, I, so can I start? I mean, review criteria, general rezoning criteria. Um, we're talking about general rezoning here. And, you know, the applicant is coming forward at requesting, you know, rezoning to HCC. To me, this is in keeping with the comprehensive plan first and foremost. This is our comprehensive plan. It's our, I mean, it's our. It all started with us. Um, so that's number two, criteria number two. It is consistent with comprehensive plan and the purpose is stated in this United, Unified Development Code. I don't think we can argue with that. It is very cut and dry, black and white. Um, number one, the amendment will promote the public health, with safety and wel- welfare. I mean, again, I don't see there's any dispute there. Criteria number three, consistent with the stated purpose of proposed zoning districts. I do, I do believe that is true. The question about CT, whether it's better, you know, fit, a better fit as CT. CT in my mind, as I look at it, the more I look, look at it, and it's right here on page seven or fourteen of one seventy-one. The CT district is designed to allow reasonable commercial land use and establish adequate development and access requirements for small parcels. With Highway one thirty-three. This use has nothing to do with one, Highway one thirty-three. We need to avoid that, right? Highway one thirty-three is a totally different speed limit. It's a different, it's a different. I don't think we want to have that conversation. Uh, CT doesn't make sense for this location. Sorry, uh, page seven or fourteen of one seventy-one. That's a, there's a, a small descriptor on commercial transitional purpose from UDC section three-point, three-point-four.
Hey, I think you need to represent that statement correctly though, Nick. Um, it's also designed to allow for one thirty-three. It's, it's not, it's not putting that as a primary. I think when we talk about CT, it's commercial transitional. So it's actually not about one thirty-three. That's an after the fact. So I, we, I, we can't misrepresent the idea of that zone district. It's, it's primarily a transition between our HCC and our new urban.
Be that as it may, the fact of the matter is. That the, our own. Comprehensive plan. Shows this lot and this block transitioning to. Ultimately, HCC, well, actually ultimately downtown, right? That's what we're calling it in the comp plan.
Right.
So. I mean. One and three, or sorry. I, criteria number two, I think trumps. CT altogether. In that the comp plan is. In a way, forcing our hand here. The only thing that I'm, I mean, again, let's, let's just keep going down the list. The amendment is not like, like item number five. The amendment is not likely to result in material adverse impacts to other property adjacent. To or in the vicinity of the subject property. I mean, I've seen several letters that suggest that. This is what neighbors want. There has been a, uh, there has been a, um. You know, the, this, this proposal has been released, uh, within a three-hundred-foot radius. It seems to me fairly straightforward.
I think we've heard from three neighbors that would not agree with that statement though. The direct neighbors, as a matter of fact.
I mean, let's go back to criteria two.
And I'm just, I'm just talking about your statement of the criteria. I, I think you need to represent facts and the facts where we just heard from three decent neighbors. That disagreed with that statement.
Well, there was a neighbor notification process within a three hundred foot radius. I'm not expecting everybody, I mean. They don't have veto power. On the comp plan.
Just being objectively clear.
And, and I, and I'm pushing against, I'm pushing back, like. Neighbors don't have veto power on a comp plan.
Um. I mean, I guess in a way, I, I just want to clarify because it sounds like there might be a little. Bit of confusion for, as of right now, it's zone CT and. It's, um, CT and HCC are very similar, honestly. And, I mean. We were, we heard the discussion about, uh, being at the concern of building height. They both have the same building height. Um. I think that the, the, the big thing that I see, why I like to see this as HCC as opposed to CT is it is more oriented towards pedestrian.
Right.
Which I do see this as a very important connection for a lot of neighborhoods.
Well, that's.
And so.
I think that, that's where criteria six comes in. I mean, we're talking about facilities, facilities and services. Um, transportation being a big one. I mean, that's number one on the list.
Mm-hmm.
So if we allowed, if we supported HCC. Um. Let's play it out outside of. A queue, so it. It'll, it, we allow the, the zoning change to occur. We support that. It's not our allowance. We would support that. Um. Pedestrian improvements, yes. Improve there. We improve, we, we, we get to deal with. Allow for, you know, the removal of some parking drama. So that's, that's, that gets. We support that in the community. So positives there. Um. How about crystal ball? Down the road. What does that open up for? So we've heard some. Adjacent residents who are anti that. Um, they have their own personal reasons. I mean, we understand what development, you know, could, could happen in the future. So if we, if we play that out, you know, looking toward, you know, kind of supporting of our downtown core. Let's, let's go there for a second perhaps.
Meaning, I mean, I think that we've hit this a couple of times, honestly, is when you just have a residential. Backed right up to a commercial space. I mean, there, there are going to be implications.
Right.
Um, and, you know, it's not a clean transition.
No.
Um. And, you know, it is tough. I mean, right on the other side of the street at your parents' property is. Um. That is historic HCC. And in a way, I almost feel like it makes more sense for either side of the street to match. As opposed to. You know, as you make it down the block at transitions.
Yeah.
Um, so. And, you know, I do, I do see it that, that intersection right there, there is kind of an important historic part of Carbondale. And so I think there is a strong argument for it to. To be. HCC.
Hmm, I mean, I agree, especially from the public facing side and the park that doesn't really get utilized and the mess of the Eighth Street. Which feels like a more definitive stop into New Urban.
Yep.
Um, this is a soft transition zone, like you do have old historic houses and neighbor, neighborhood behind there that. Um. Uh, like, yeah, isn't historic commercial core. Um, or wouldn't see the, the need to change that, but in that, the impact on Seventh Street with. Um, I think the, just the town growing up. Um. And especially, I mean, no crystal ball, but the improvements they're doing are, aren't even too, uh, ACT zoning. Like along the, the fence line to the north, it's, it's residential based off of what, what was proposed in the packet. So. On high-value real estate with a high-needs service that is, uh, that soft, uh, social lubricant that could help downtown. Um, and in the zoning that we've proposed in the, the comp plan. That front section and, uh, uh, that becoming HCC makes, makes sense to me.
Yeah, I get all that social lubricate. It left me a little awkward, but. We won't go there.
Jared, I didn't have a.
My whole goal is just to make you squirm.
In terms of crystal ball, I mean, to your point. Nick, I, you know, we could approve. The general rezoning. With contingencies and add, you know, some language that requires some sort of parking, bike, bike infrastructure. Or more pedestrian infrastructure or more clear pedestrian infrastructure. The curb, for example, um, you know, on the sidewalk becomes. You know, an added buffer between.
Right, right.
You know, and, and, you know, gives people direction on what to do when they get out of their cars.
Right. Sorry, Jared, I have just a quick question regarding, just because you know that UDC so well. Um. There's the stepping down of buildings for neighboring. Uh, units. And sorry, Kelly, this could be addressed to you as well. Um. But, uh. That, does that apply to both C, CT zoning and HCC zoning?
It does. There's always, um. A consideration for transitions between zoning districts. So the current proposal is clearly appropriate, given the adjacent residential use, the scale of that historic structure and the proposed. One, you know, to one and a half story height building. Um, zoning to HCC would, and, and the current CT would allow a taller building and that. Any, any proposal that was taller would then be considered relative to the surrounding built environment.
And so that would apply for either zoning?
Yes.
Okay. It looks like they're basically the same.
And, and the UDC isn't just specific on zoning, it's also on uses. So it's the residential commercial use compatibility, not just the zone district compatibility, so.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. I guess that's, in my mind, it's the only value of the CT. It's, it's the literal transition as intended, you know, I, I know. CT, our consultant. Drew a red blob over that blue blob for our flume. But I think there, there is some thoughtfulness, some intelligence to the idea, just, just to put one feather in the seat in the commercial transitional cap. You know, there, there is that step down. And. Use. Step that occurs between the residential. And our downtown core.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the flume, CT is on both sides of one thirty-three. It is a one thirty-three zone district.
For a section.
I mean, for most of it, I mean, that, I mean, you got, you got.
I think it's eleven parking spaces that are required in CT that is the issue there.
Right.
And that doesn't make any sense to me on. The alley, the need for parking, especially even excluding the residential in front of the north. Part there, the amount of parking that could be added from a, a, a commercial. Uh, perspective there is, I think is adequate, especially from. Yeah, it's downtown. It's, it's supposed to be busy and those parking spots, spots should be on, on the front of the building. The alleyway, the eleven parking spaces, I don't think that's a good.
It's not even possible. No, yeah, there, there's, there isn't the dimension there.
I mean, not only that, but.
From a CT to HCC, when we, the parking is the issue within that, the, the building height, all the variances that you'd, you'd have to put on there, like that's. It gets boiled down to that, correct?
Yeah.
Between CT and HCC.
Well, then there's a mixed-use component to HCT, right?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to look for.
Yeah.
There's like. Arming and, uh, hospitals. I can't find the list now.
I think one of the tricky things, though, is that. Yes, there's the eight parking spaces, but they're not on the site.
Right.
When if it was CT. They would have to be on the site.
On-site parking.
Gotcha. Which. That's, I mean, that. Yeah. Which I think is what, what they ran, why we had such an issue with this project. The first time around.
I remember it.
A parking, that was horrible.
Totally.
And, you know, I think we, we encouraged that funny little parking space under the guideline, just because that was our, the loophole that we could find to make it work out. Um, so.
Okay, so. We're, we're gonna talk about this again, right? Before, or we, we're not voting on.
No, no, no.
Approval tonight, so. Does anybody mind if I try to keep? Move it on to the next. Topic, or should we continue talking about one tonight? And then how do you want to organize?
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, I think that Jared kind of needs some direction in a way on all of them.
Okay.
I mean, if we can give that to you, I think that that's really what.
Well, let's, let's.
Help with this, but.
Keep, keep this going and, and move on to subdivision exemption.
Yes.
Okay.
It is, I just want to make sure that, um, because.
No, I have, I get that.
We also have Jared.
We do have here.
If, if, if I may, um, could we, we've been going for a couple hours. Would you guys be willing to take a quick five-minute break? Um. And then we can, we can come back at nine thirty. Is that acceptable or?
Yeah, that is perfectly acceptable.
No breaks.
No breaks.
No breaks.
Sorry, I'm just so excited about it.
The recording is gonna stay on.
Okay.
For everybody. I. So we're.
Excuse me, I've got a water bottle on my bike if you really, really want to park. See, that's, that was, that was really hard to hear because I literally say hi to her every single morning. I literally walk by her every single day and say hi to her and like, and just, just had a conversation with her about a camping trip and everything, so.
That's what I'm going for.
Yeah.
That was that I talked to. Every month.
I was gonna say.
Even if we were to rezone HCC, we don't have to do the head and parking. In front of our house.
Right, right. Oh, yeah, I thought that, I thought, I was caught up by that.
And even by Lynn too, I was like. I blocked the line.
I didn't say Lynn's comment about, we've only talked once. I was like, that's.
It's not true.
Yeah, I, yeah, I've seen Lynn and Talon at least four or five times and just said, hey, you're a nice. And like, not even talk about school stuff. Also, I kind of wondered, like, I like.
Do you forget that?
Like, is that a context? But like.
Stuck in.
About the same. So, yeah.
I've never been like. So, you know, sometimes I'm like.
Well, I was gonna say, and that was the other part about that comment, it's like. It's a two-way street, like. You see me opening up at seven fifteen every day and walking out at six every day, same with Raul around the corner and same with the lady with the dog that says hi to her and like, I dog talk.
Yeah.
It's like.
No, I know, yeah.
Yeah, I mean. Granted, it's. Yeah.
It's like.
Yeah.
I'm thinking so. It's not yet. Hmm. Decision. So like, so say.
Yeah.
Which varies.
And we also get the. Learned up by.
So these. The letter is.
Yeah. Cherish.
In winning everybody else, including the game.
That's not Jared. Totally.
That's something that is. That's like.
No, that's all right, because.
Yeah, we thought.
Even end of those.
I appreciate.
Yeah.
I'd be curious to. I was scribbling, I was pretty fast of that one. No chair.
Yeah, I just. I have like literally broken from any of your order for me. I didn't. Time I was with the parents to do.
She's one of those.
But I think that she'd be tired of it.
So she knows that, like, code and, like, the, like, the certain.
All right, everybody, are you ready?
Oh.
Of course.
It's a long day.
It's happened earlier.
What are you doing?
What are you doing?
Lie down.
Dang.
That's dedication.
All right, guys, let's get back to it. Um, Nick, I'm sorry, the reason why I was, why I was trying to cut you off before, from moving on forward is I wanted to make sure that, uh, Jared, Kim and Jess, that all you three had it. Uh, I just wanted to check and make sure that you didn't feel like you were being left out or if there was something that you wanted to add to the conversation. Um, how, how do you feel about the, the zoning?
Well, this is an interesting conversation because. I started out really. Feeling like it didn't have any place in HCC. And yet, as it evolves and as this conversation goes on, it's like. Maybe it does. It's really mysterious to me. Why that whole area isn't HCC to begin with.
Mm-hmm.
You know, like Lynn's building on the corner and. So I think I need to be more, um, informed as far as. Is the only difference, the parking, that really can't be the case? And what are we setting ourselves up for the future? Are there some risks? If we do go over to H, HCC? I'd like to understand that a little bit better.
The risk of if it goes HCC?
Yeah.
So.
It's associated with its own districts.
Yeah, I've got to go pull out my UDC book to, to look at it.
I mean, I, I do think that in general, uh, HCC ends up being a lot more, um. Honestly, because of the parking issue, like that becomes that much more. Valuable of a piece of property, because if you have to. Part, if you actually have to have parking on your site, that's gonna take up a large portion, portion of your property.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I think that, that, that is kind of a, a, a fairly big implication on that site. That being said, I mean, the town also doesn't, uh. The town is discouraging of using the alleyway for access. So I'm not sure how you could actually provide onsite parking on this lot if you're not allowed to use that alleyway access.
Yeah, you literally just stole my point.
Yeah, it just seems like it creates mass chaos.
May clarify.
Trying to come and go on that alley.
So the, the discouragement of the alley isn't to use it for access or for parking. The discouragement of the alley was used as a throughway to get through back to Main Street. And the issue is the five-way intersection by White House isn't. And the issue is the five way intersection by White House isn't. An overly functional. Intersection, I don't know of too many five way intersections that are overly functional. And so the discouragement from the town has really been. To, to encourage um. Traffic to come back to Seventh and then go out. In addition, I think in the long term vision of the town. There's the potential that that alleyway could be closed. And so to. Um, orient parking in a diagonal manner. That essentially forces vehicular travel down that alley. If the alley closes. Creates a worse situation than to have the head in parking. So I think that was a lot of the, the history there. And if I can just touch briefly on the zoning, um. You know. Nick, you, you've read one portion of the commercial transitional that's at the very end. If you read kind of the, the early sections of the commercial transitional. Zone district, the purpose is really to provide that. Buffer of intensity of uses from your historic commercial core to your residential uses. And one of the ways that the commercial transitional zone district achieves that. Is by requiring properties to park their obligation. And as Jay pointed out, that inherently creates a less intense. Development pattern that can occur on that, just because you have to account for your required parking. Um, and so as I think the town was zoned and laid out originally, and this is. My assumption, I don't have anything written that says this. It seems like the historic commercial core was identified in one area, those outlying areas of that. Were looked at as commercial transitional, and then you had transitions to residential medium low densities as was appropriate. And then as the town has, has grown and changed, the zone districts have, have changed. Um, and you see more of that commercial transitional, especially on the one hundred block, starting to change to historic commercial core. Properties like this are looking to change historic commercial core and so. Um, uh, you know, I, I'm not saying historic commercial core or commercial transitional is right or wrong. I'm just trying to provide that context of kind of. Why the commercial transitional zone district exists and what that. Purpose of it is within kind of the greater fabric of, of Carbondale in this community. Um. With that being said, you know, if. From what I've heard, it seems like there's support for some of the aspects of the HCC zone district and. Better aligning HCC with the downtown use in the future land use map. Um. But I just want to make sure that was. Clear kind of what that commercial transitional, it's not just parking, it also leads to that intensity of development. So.
No, thank you for that.
Is, is there a way to? If. We go with the HCC, is there a way to require the nine parking spots to stay in perpetuity?
Out in front?
Yeah.
Why would they not?
Yeah, they.
When you, when you, when you put parking in the right away like that, it's not gonna be undone.
Ever.
Well, I mean, I guess examples would be. What we're seeing on Main Street with parking conversions to outdoor eating. Um, and we know we would have lacked for that from certain business owners.
So HCC.
If it was a restaurant or hospitality, the parking. Would be required.
On-site parking would be required.
So then it would have to be internal to the site. It couldn't be taking the right of, right of way.
Because it's not on, yeah.
Hey, real quick, Nicholas, is your mic on? I can barely hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry.
I don't know that you could guarantee perpetuity.
No, it's public.
What, what's, what about?
Use scenarios that I could think of.
Like the, the. The issue with the five way stop. And the alley and right of way and not so much parking, but how fast people move there. Um, from talking to the neighbors, the Seventh and Colorado. Two-way stop. There's a stop sign on the north, south on Seventh, but not on Colorado. And with the parking around there and considering more parking coming. This is a little off topic, but that really needs to be a, a four-way. Stop, and I think that would help with some of the safety concerns of speed and what's going through there. And is there a way to help with? Creating a one-way on that alleyway. To, to mitigate some of the, the issues with where people are coming on or interacting with the Eighth Street intersection. That like. Cause I think there is a piece of the zoning here, the HCC. CT, how that goes, but also this underlying current of parking with an underlying current of. Use and safety for, for how this is done appropriately. And I think those are some of the underlying issues that would. And I don't know where to address those or how that would be.
That would be a public works issue, right? Adding a stop sign or turning that into a four-way stop sign would be a right-of-way public works issue. Go ahead, sorry.
No, you're, you're absolutely right. It would be a public works issue and this commission could certainly. Uh, make that recommendation to the Board of Trustees to be considered for future planning.
As part of. A recommended condition of approval.
You are making a recommendation on the rezoning to Board of Trustees, right? You have action, you have control over the special use approval. Um, and there are criteria specific in each of those to the traffic and parking impacts. So I did just want to mention that. There's some overlapping criteria between. Between the four applications, the subdivision is a fairly straightforward one. But between site plan and special use permit, there is, there are criteria specific to traffic and parking impacts and. I would also suggest you speak both to the parking, which is the employee parking, staff parking. Question at much different impact than the traffic impact generated by families dropping off and picking up.
That's like verse, those are, those are there and then gone. Eleven, eleven cars and the requirements of parking. A block away or where that goes, I, I think. The CMC thing, if it was free is a great option, but to put that burden of paid parking. On them is.
Well, at, at some point, I think. Not, they, they can't. There, there, lots being asked for, I think is part of this. You know, I think there's questions around who's paying for certain things. Where are your, you're coming from? I, I, I do think it's important. As much as we all. Understand and perhaps want to support this need. There is a, a, they have to carry some of that. Right? So yes, I mean, five thousand years of dollars a year sucks.
But living two blocks away and the parking for eleven cars within a block. Of there, which their parking study wasn't the circulator or that, but there.
There was, there was no parking study.
I mean, they.
Cost to the proposal.
I guess their parking. Analysis.
I mean, they did, they did count.
Yeah. And I guess from. Living on Seventh Street, two blocks up. And the amount of available parking is parallel right now in the residential neighborhood behind there. Supporting eleven, eleven cars, I don't think is unreasonable.
So are you saying that you think that if they're not required to have the eleven spots? There is capacity in surrounding neighborhoods and surrounding right-of-way parking areas to cover those eleven spots.
I mean, we're sitting next to a parking lot right here.
I'm, I'm just, that's what you're saying. I just wanted to make sure that I'm understanding you.
Yeah, I, I, if that's in our, if, if the public parking in front of their space based off of the HCC zoning and them not requiring to park eleven spaces. I think there is a reasonable solution in this town to find eleven parking spots within walking distance.
I would agree.
I agree. I mean. Hate to say it, but I kind of don't like the idea of getting caught up on this number of eleven, because it's based on employees. It has nothing to do with. How us. How this facility functions. And so I think, I think the hard thing that I'm struggling with here is that, um, I personally, just from other projects that. Um. Have been presented as well as this, also including the project that was on Main Street. Uh, down by. The uh. Distillery down there. Um. They all had the, the traffic studies that actually. I think had more, more of a thorough breakdown that really. I don't know, I guess has, gives me a better understanding as to how many parking spaces actually are needed. From an actual calculation.
But CT doesn't, does CT require? Parking. For. But so, hold on, does CT require parking for? People who are visiting the business?
It's not, I don't think it's designated by use, it's designated, designated.
Well, it, I think CT says, you have to have enough parking spaces for your employees. So. I just want to clarify that we're not talking about people visiting. The traffic analysis is for traffic, not parking. Because the parking is for employees if we're talking about CT.
Right, yes.
So then, so then the traffic analysis is really traffic and safety.
Yes.
Okay.
And I guess what the traffic analysis shows and the density on that street of. If six eighty-nine is active and a coffee shop's in there, that's adding. From that study sixty-eight more cars and, and you're, you're, it's, it's a busy street. Re, regardless, all those streets off of Main Street are. I think, is there enough public parking? For the peak periods of the drop-off hours? Of, of when that happens? And yeah, I like the employee parking or, or that's like, those are two separate things. And it's, yeah.
I think the employee parking requirement. Seems archaic.
Especially since they all say they're carpooling or.
Well, and even if they're not, like, if you work on Main Street, or if you, I mean, I work on Twelfth Street. Which is not. Like, I don't know what the requirements are. I've never looked at the zoning of our office, but there's like two parking spots and none for employees. And so. We're encouraging people to not drive to work. We're encouraging people to keep their cars off the road. So wouldn't we want to move to a zone district? That doesn't have this archaic. Parking requirement.
I mean. HCC?
Yeah.
So I mean, I. I hate parking.
Well, I guess to, to get, I, we, we got lots of other stuff to talk about, but from the comprehensive plan. Parking and the density of parking requirements was top of the list of mitigating the amount of parking spots needed. In, in that area.
Reducing them?
Reducing, yes. Or not in the design for parking, we're not going to design, we're not going to plan for that. We're part, we're planning for, trying to plan for people.
Um. If I may, just add a comment about the parking requirements, uh. Childcare is a little unique in that the parking requirement is based on the number of employees. Most uses, most commercial uses, and we do distinguish between different categories of commercial use. Require parking based on a square footage, one per two hundred, one per three hundred, one per thousand, et cetera. So.
Yeah, thank you for that.
But it's only required for CT. CT uses.
Well, other zoning districts require parking. HCC is our only zoning district that does not require parking for commercial uses other than lodging.
Regardless, sorry.
Other zoning districts would require parking for commercial uses at the, the various ratios. And other districts would require one per employee for childcare as well, yeah.
Thank you for that. That's important. Um, yeah, is there something that we should be prioritizing to get to you guys? Because we're definitely getting. Stuck on certain things that I don't know if that'll necessarily help you guys with, uh. Developing your. Uh, motions.
Absolutely, I can try to condense the discussion and thoughts if a bit. Um, as you look at the criteria for the four different applications, there are some overlaps. There's some criteria that are very similar from one to the next. And as Nick, um, started out, you know, rolling through the rezoning criteria. I would again sort of call your attention to the traffic and parking impacts. There are criteria specific to those. Within the special use permit review, which is under this commission's jurisdiction to approve or disapprove the special use permit for daycare, for childcare. It's criteria C. And within the. Site plan approval criteria as well, there is a traffic specific. Criteria number four. Um, you, you, you. Need to make findings that the traffic impacts will be sufficiently mitigated. And there are general criteria across all applications that. Negative impacts, potential negative impacts on neighbors will be mitigated, et cetera. So there's. You've had that discussion a little bit, but so that's part of what we're looking for, and those do cross boundaries between rezoning. Site plan and special use. But the one that stands out specific to special use and site plan is the traffic and parking impacts.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, so we, we touched on parking and traffic, right? And that hits several applications. Right? We don't have any direction.
Any findings?
No, and I'm reluctant to require a traffic study. Right? Which would incur additional cost on the applicant, right?
But within our request to the trustees.
We have time to think, sorry.
We have a whole town safety to think about though, and eighty kids.
But, but the study may. May show the same results. I mean, it may just be, I mean, maybe a peer review is all we need, right? Maybe, maybe we don't even need that. I mean, it's just observational, it's not rocket science, traffic study, it's just sitting in with a counter. I mean, it's not. But we can table that. I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. I just don't want to incur additional cost on the applicant who's already, you know, done a ton of work. Um, and strapped. Um. You know, I mean, can we move on to the next? Application? Do you want to talk about this? Seems like a formality. On subdivision exemption approval. Um. I mean, there's.
I guess, can we just act like recommend the? From. The stop sign in the alleyway, like those are the safety recommendations that we can bring up and say those have to be. Thought out that are outside of a traffic study and are placed on the town.
I love that idea. I think that's a terrific idea.
Sounds good. And I also mean, in this, if we're, if we're doing that, let's put on there as well. Street alignment, can we, how do you all feel about the street alignment?
It needs to move.
Okay, so I, I would, I would agree with that as well. I, I, I think we have to have. Cars parked in a straight line, consistent lane widths. Right? If, if we're gonna pack it in there. We, we have, that has to at least be something to, to look at, or at least have public works weigh in on that.
Right, and so if, if you guys aren't, so this is, this goes back to what I brought up to the applicant at the beginning with the, the three feet. Um, because as of right now, they're aligning the sidewalk to the north. Which up there, that is parallel parking, when down below we have. Uh, the perpendicular parking. And so really the sidewalk has to be moved back to align with the perpendicular. And I mean, it is only a seventy-five foot wide right-of-way, so if you have a five-foot sidewalk, almost twenty-foot parking. That's twenty-five feet, either side, that's fifty, then you have twenty-five feet in the middle, like it's pretty tight. So I think that. This is the opportunity to where I think it does need to push. Up against the edge of. The, uh, the right-of-way. And I know that that makes it tighter on you guys in that space and everything, but I think that that's just. That, that's what I, I definitely feel strongly about that, just because I want to make sure there's enough width in the road there for, uh.
It.
General flow of traffic.
It feels like low-hanging fruit, right? If, if, if we, if there is this issue around traffic and safety, it's an, it's an easy. Kind of area to shift the, the cost to the applicants to comment, you know, there is going to be some weirdness with the sidewalk shift. Sounds like a, an easy burden to, you know, or easy little things to take care of to. Help ensure a safer street.
I would also, I would also add the curb. Right, that transition from road to sidewalk.
So a proper upbrae curb, not a V, not a, not a valley pan. Yeah, right.
Do you think there's any? Benefit to? Some sort of? Like gutter or something that marks the end of the road and the parking?
Oh, because we're going to gravel?
Or asphalt, doesn't matter, but to make the road really clear.
Oh. That'll leave the public.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, that, that's going to be a decision made by our public works.
Talk to them about that one.
Um, because it's within the public right-of-way.
Yeah.
And so we, we will require that the, um. So long as the materiality, um, and the curb and gutter treatment. Is, um, acceptable to both. Is, um, acceptable to both Public Works and the Planning Zoning Commission. The specifics of constructing that, whether a valley pan or something else gets installed will be at the discretion of the Public Works Department and. The applicant will have to demonstrate compliance with that.
Good, that. Everyone feel good on that one?
Yeah, I feel great about that. Jared, how do you feel about that?
Didn't that, that parking starts at Colorado? Does it stay parallel at Amy's and then it changes?
I don't think we have control.
There's no, you can't control what.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was just wondering, cause I, I think she brought that up.
If people started parking parallel or face forward and in front of Amy, there's nothing you could really. Do about it, right, like, people park all sorts of ways up there.
Yeah, that's not really marked.
There's, there's no space for pulling, for perpendicular pulling up by her.
Okay.
Currently, her and across the street, it's just, it's just not designed for it, you can't.
On, across the street from her, uh, next to C M C, there's.
Well, y- yeah, but it's grass. Not really alive, but it.
It's like gravel.
It was once grass.
Uh, okay, yeah.
You can require, I, I don't think we can make any.
No, cause we were only talking about the space in front of there.
Yeah, I was just curious as to what your vision was, how that stream transitioned.
I think, so as of right now, all of the parking in along six eighty-nine. Main, that's all perpendicular parking.
Yeah.
Next door to these guys, uh.
The south.
To this, to the west, that's all perpendicular parking.
In the.
Oh, yeah, to the south of the applicant, yes, thank you, that's all, so, pretty much that whole half the block would then be perpendicular parking, so honestly, it work. It does work really well.
Yeah.
With the surrounding parking, so, um, and I do agree with the, um. I don't know, I can't remember who it was that stood up, but the, you know, parking perpendicular and unloading and loading kids, that's a lot safer than. Parallel parking, I, that was a great comment.
Really?
So.
No question.
I'm at.
If I may, just ask, uh, for a bit more information about the character of the curb and the designated parking spaces as the applicant presented. Our third street was developed with a ribbon curb. In the O T R district, um, this zoning district, whether C T or H C C. In the code is required to provide a raised curb and gutter. But if this commission feels like the character of this block is better served by a ribbon flush at grade treatment. Then that is good feedback for the applicant and for us to have, Department of Public Works has stated that they are. Comfortable either way, we've heard from you about the, the desire for protection to the sidewalk with a raised curb. But the additional question will be the ball belts that are part of the proposal. Um, the other thing I wanted to clarify is that in your discussion of mitigation measures for traffic and parking impacts, you. Would have the power to ask the applicant to consider improvements outside of the right of way in front of their property, it could. Be right of way somewhere else in Seventh Street, for instance.
I like the. No curb look. I think it's great, I don't think this is the right place for it.
Agreed.
Yeah, and there's kids up there.
Yeah, I just don't think.
You gotta stop.
Yeah.
Yeah, from a safety perspective and what that is, I, I agree.
I have no problem with that blush curb. Or alternative curbs being used around the, around the planting areas. You know, call it a rain garden, call it whatever you want, but I, I think. That to me feels just fine.
Yeah.
Being flush, especially with kids getting out of cars, I actually imagine that'd be easier, I watch my kids get out of cars next to curbs and it's like a. Waiting for him to eat it, um, every time, so I think that's.
Stopping of the cars.
Yeah.
Yes, exactly, that sidewalk is.
Jared, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, um, once again, you guys keep taking my points, um, I'm like in favor of flush at those trees. Just because of how tight it is, it, it offers you a little bit potentially a better. Opportunity to back out of there if you got like a vehicle or something like that.
How do you do that though?
Advantages.
How do you have a raised curb in one part of a sidewalk and not a raised curb in another? With, and maintain the same elevation.
Run the.
Can't have to work with a civil engineer.
You got it, it's, there's, there's a way, everything's fine.
It's, it's all math and it's all science, Nick. You put them together and you get a really.
Think an architect would have, have dealt with that once or twice.
I guess the point, I guess the point I'm trying to make is if you got a raised curb in one spot, you're gonna have to raise, have raised curb all the way across. In continuity, or you're gonna change elevation in your sidewalk.
Sort of.
Yeah, it happens all the.
So.
Moving on.
Yeah, but we've got.
So, we can't go into curbs.
We got, we got curbs in front of cars.
Curbs in front of cars.
Curbs in front of cars, I think that's all we have space for, honestly, too.
Right.
All right, yeah, subdivision exemption approval criteria, I don't, this seems like a formality to me. And, and I'm in favor of it. I would recommend approval, but I, and I'm just looking through it, I don't see anything here, and again, we're talking about. Public utilities. Okay. It's all infrastructure related stuff, that doesn't seem to be.
Straw pull, are, is every, are you all in favor of H C C?
Yes, I am, you want us to draw a poll out?
We, we know.
We're just going around in a circle.
I'm just wondering if people were willing to share, maybe we could just, if, if the majority of.
Right.
Us are, then we can check it off the list and move on.
Yeah, honestly, I am in support of H C C.
One, two, three.
I have a question. The. In the, uh, future land use map. Where they're talking about downtown. Is that? In the new comprehensive plan? Where it goes to downtown instead of C T?
Yes.
Okay, so that's like moving forward into the future, we don't wanna use C T, we wanna go to this downtown. Zone.
That's right, yeah, I'm looking at it right.
That was our consultant's recommendation.
Downtown is. Like H C C.
If I may, there is a strong correlation between the existing H C C zoning district. And the downtown land use area.
Right.
The future land use map is not a zoning map, it is often treated as a zoning map.
Okay.
Exactly.
Jared was just about to jump out of his chair, so I had to speak, but, um, just to clarify, but given those, that distinction. The H C C aligns very closely, this block is a unique creature with, when you compare those two maps and. So there you have it, but just to be clear, the future land use map is not intended to be a zoning map, it says that very clearly in the comp plan. It is part of the current comp plan.
And the future land use map.
Specifically does not use terms that mimic or are identical to our zone districts. To help reinforce that, so when, when you say that the C T zone district isn't included in the future land use map. The H C C zone district isn't either.
Right, I.
So, so, yeah, um. Yes.
We seem to have a lot of that not apples to apples situation.
I mean, do we agree?
People jump over and they think the flume is zone.
It.
It's so close.
I would love to say you guys are unique, but there's a lot of, um, there, there's a lot of confusion over future land use maps, zoning. And, uh, the relationship between the two, so.
But if you read the land use designation for downtown, it's very close to H C C, it is more close to H C C than it is to C T.
So yes, yes, anybody else wanna weigh in, possibly move this one on?
Jared, what you got?
I, I am not in favor of H C C, um. It seems to be pedestrian focused. And a lot of the conversation seems to be around traffic and parking and, um, impact around it. Especially the residential unit right next to it, so, um, I'm not particularly in favor. Uh, I do see the benefits to, uh, its designation. I'm just not in favor of it.
Thanks, Jared. Jim, Jess, do you have any opinions on this that you are, have, are able to share?
I keep going kind of back and forth, but I think I'm okay with it being H C C.
Okay, Jeffs?
I'm leaning that way, too.
And you are as well, I see.
Yeah, I, I guess if it stays, I mean, the hypothetical game, if it stays C T and the. Parking requirements for that in that specific space, cause it's very limited on that street of, of what's there. Like what? What's the biggest, what's the, what's the difference?
Intensity, development intensity.
With more parking.
I'm not going into parking anymore, I'm just talking about its development and it allows for.
But from a, from a human perspective of how that gets developed. Thinking in the future for our town and this little piece right there. From keeping it C T and requiring a variance on parking or pushing it to H C C. It, it does the same thing. For, for this applicant. For future. Hypotheticals, it gets way more complicated.
It's more complicated.
But C T would require the parking to be on site.
But we can request a variance, correct?
Okay, I see.
Yeah.
What's your stance? Uh, I believe in transitional zoning, personally. That's just, I, I, I think there's a value to it, I think especially in small communities, there's a. It allows for the transition of form and, and other, other elements that are outside of, I think, this, this. Current conversation, but I'm a minority, so it doesn't really matter what I think, right, I think, I think as a commission. Five of, of seven are, you know, in support of it, so let's go with what the, let's, let's be democratic here and. If you all are pro, then let's just provide that and, um. Move on.
I mean, I guess. I'm, I am getting stuck up on this, if we are to do, like, if we were to encourage us to be C T, I mean. Does that just kill this project? Like, could we actually? Do, uh, sorry, it's not called a variance, what, it's a.
Alternative compliance.
Alternative compliance. Do we have an alternative compliance that says that, oh, you don't need eleven? We can get by with just the two that are on site, like. That's.
There, there is a recommendation that if you're shown, like, if you're proven in, like, in an adverse situation, you only have to do eighty percent. So that just puts us at nine. So it's not like. I guess, I don't know if we can further imply on that, but that is one option.
But the nine can't be on the street. Or they can.
They can't.
They can't.
It's right of way, not inside.
Yeah.
And I guess, uh, yeah, the transitional zoning, like, of, of what that. Does there is that filling the, the, that need from. The. The, the park to, to H Street and what's, what's on, on Main Street of. The transition there, it's. It's all businesses and. Like the alleyway, it's really the alleyway. Look, the town is talking about annexing the alleyway. I don't know if that's still would remain an easement, and there's probably utilities under there, so they can't completely get rid of it, but they would annex it. I, I'd like, I, I could go either way.
Like, I gave you guys an out, come on, you all. All five of you were go, you, you were all going there, go there, it's cool, I mean, if, if that's what, if that's what your guts are telling you, then like, for real, like. I, I just, that's why I withheld my opinion, cause I, I had a feeling I was in the, in the, on the, on the less, lesser side, and that's, and it's. It's a be, be democracy, go.
I, 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 I really just wanna kind of see this project, I wanna. Figure out how to make this work, because I do see this as something that's really important to our town. I mean, C T, a C T zoned, zoning of this, of this project would put the project at risk. No question about it.
I think it's an essential. It's like, it's an essential facility.
I mean, you were on the committee, they looked, they, there were, we rejected several proposals.
So. I, let, let me, let me see if I can try, try to summarize this a little bit, um, you know, I think we're getting a few. You know, we've gotten some good feedback in support of a potential rezoning to H C C, I think we've had some good feedback of concerns. With regards to going to H C C, um, you know, based on. Our analysis and our conversations with the applicant, and I think they can represent their case, but. I don't think a C T zoning would kill the project, I think a C T zoning would change the project. I think there still could be a pathway where they could do some sort of expansion, it may not be to the extent that they're demonstrating. If they have to have some of their required parking on site. There is pathways and we just did one with a similar type of housing development. Um, where the town had approved an alternative compliance to reduce the parking obligations on site. For mitigating factors in the area, and so I think what, what Kelly presented in her staff report. Provided some potential mitigating factors that could allow for this commission to potentially allow for a. Reduced number of parking spaces for this specific use. But I think to, to Nick's point, you know, we're, we're getting, or Nicholas's point, we are getting some, um. Good feedback on potential findings, and so I think, you know, maybe without spinning wheels tonight. You know, um, it could be something that we say, it is ten, maybe it's something we put a cap on this, continue this for. Um, two weeks and staff can kind of work with the applicant to. Clean up, remove one of the alternatives, um, and. You know, we could come back and provide some findings that might have, some recommended findings that might have some. More specific or honed in conversations around that. That I think we represent, that, that could represent the majority, we could also present some. Findings and a recommendation that represents what I'm hearing might be the minority, if that's something that you guys would prefer. I, I think that's just a, a potential option forward.
I honestly think that having a little bit more direction as to findings, I think would be really beneficial and just. Kind of streamlining our discussions on this, because I. Yeah, it's just so open-ended at, at this point, it's a lot to talk about and a lot to work through, so I think, I think that, that sounds great. Personally, I don't know if you guys all agree. He looks skeptical. I'm, I'm in favor of H C C, I'm in favor of approving the application. We don't want to belabor this project, and that's what we're doing by disproving. The application.
But we're not doing that yet.
No, but.
We're continuing.
I mean, you, you were on the board, they, I mean. We, they came to us with several locations. Oh, yeah, I mean, do you remember, there were three or four, three or four different applications that they came to us with.
Right.
And for one reason or another, they couldn't make it happen, what they're proposing is in alignment with everything that we and the town want to do. All the outreach that we did for, uh, this comp plan update. Everything that we heard from, from the public, this project is in alignment with all of that, and we're talking about rejecting the first application out of four.
No one's rejecting anything, we're just, we're, we're doing our job right now, Nick. We're going through the process.
I think a big part of this is.
You weren't here.
This was, this was an ordeal for them.
Okay.
And I, I mean, it is still an ordeal for them, I mean, this is, this is definitely a process, and thank you guys for bearing through all of this over. Had, you've been, this application went in. How many, was it a, a year, was it? Over a year ago, yeah, well, I mean, honestly, thank you guys for working with us on this, cause it is a process. But I think the big thing is, is that as of right now, we don't. Even have the findings written up and we don't really have a solid motion. To actually, I mean, we could just, I guess we could just make a motion to recommend to the Board of Trustees, but.
For the H C C. Zoning.
I, I, I would strongly recommend against making a motion tonight, I don't think it would be a strong motion. I don't think it would be a well-founded motion and a defensible motion, and I would really recommend that. The Planning Commission allow staff to help draft a strong motion that has good findings. So that, um, we can. Limit this as a precedent-setting decision and allow it to respond to the specific application that is being requested. And it doesn't become a potential playbook for every person who wants to rezone to. H C C to not. HCC to not park their project, right?
Right.
Um, so, you know, I I think we've received some good feedback and I think we can draft. A a recommendation that I'm sure we'll have some additional conversations and discussions, but. I think we can at least help you guys get started towards a strong recommendation.
Sounds great. Thank you. Thank you. Well said. Um, do we have to make a motion to continue?
Could I make a motion? To go to bed. I mean, continue. I motion to continue this meeting um and. Until or the date is the eighth, is it? Thank you, June eighth.
I'll second that.
Thanks.
Do we have to do all the other stuff? I.
Alright, I, I'm sorry.
Stuff on the agenda still?
Oh, yeah, we have more stuff.
We can, we.
No.
Executive decision.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, second. Oh, jaded.
Oh, I didn't, I I was asking.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Nick. Yeah, thank you.